That is so weird.
Okay, Mayor, we are on YouTube.
Okay, very good.
Stand by. You ready, sir?
All right.
Okay, here we go in five, four, three, two, one, we're live.
Good evening and welcome to this, the Livermore City Council meeting. Let the, we ask for a roll call vote. I call the meeting to order. Roll call vote, please. I will call, I'm sorry. For the July 27th meeting, the Livermore City Council.
Councilmember Monroe.
Healthies here.
Here. Councilmember Coomer.
Here.
Councilmember Carley.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Here.
Mayor Marshawn.
Here. Okay, thank you very much. Please bear with me. We are dealing with some technical difficulties here. All right, the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Due to feedback and delay with the meeting platforms, I will be reciting tonight's pledge as I just did. Participating in tonight's meeting, this meeting is being conducted pursuant to provisions of the Brown Act and recent executive orders issued by the governor to facilitate teleconferencing to reduce the risk of COVID-19 transmission at public meetings. The city of Livermore has met all of the applicable noticing requirements and the public is welcome to participate in this meeting. I'm going to take a few minutes to explain the process we'll be using at this meeting. Tonight, we're using the Zoom meeting platform and YouTube. Members of the public can participate by submitting public comment through YouTube or the Zoom Q and A feature. Zoom and YouTube meeting links are available on the city of Livermore website and on the agenda. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be submitted per person, per item. If you submit multiple comments on a single item, the last comment will be read into the record and the remaining comments will be added to the meeting record. We'd ask that your comments be no more than 500 words. The public comment period closes at the conclusion of the comments being read into the record. Items received prior to the meeting using email or the Google form link on the city agenda were provided to the city council and the public as a supplemental packet prior to the meeting and therefore will not be read in, into the record. But rest assured, the city council has read and taken all those comments under advisement. So with that, let us go into proclamations and presentations. We have the Tri Valley Air Quality Community Alliance. And that will be from the Oversight Committee, Jennifer Yaman's will be presenting the presentation tonight, Tri Valley Air Quality Community Alliance. Thank you.
Thank you. Hope everyone can hear me.
Yes, going in loud and clear.
Good evening, Mayor Marshawn and council members. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Jennifer Yaman's. I'm a Livermore resident and a volunteer with the Tri Valley Air Quality Community Alliance, representing its Oversight Committee. We are a new group and tonight I'd like to introduce you to our group's work, help you and others understand why our local air quality is a serious health issue in our community and why input from our local residents is essential to identifying local concerns about air quality and health as well as strategies that will help us create healthier and more vibrant communities here in the Tri Valley. I want to begin by acknowledging the leadership of two individuals for helping this effort get off the ground. Supervisor Scott Hagerty, who sits on the board of the Region's Air District and has long fought for better air in our valley, and Councilmember Trish Monroe, who did a lot of key legwork to help convene the Tri Valley Air Quality Community Alliance's founding members. Without their leadership, our group would not have the mission resources to begin to help our community face our air quality challenges together. So with that, I'm going to share my screen here so you can follow along with my overview of our work and what we hope to accomplish in the next six to nine months. Just start that here. So at the big picture level, when we think about the context for our work on our local air quality, it helps to understand where past federal, state, and regional efforts have tied air quality research and monitoring to public health. State and regional entities can regulate various sources of emissions such as motor vehicles and industrial sources, which has greatly improved our air quality over the past 50 years. But these high-level analyses can leave out significant local contributions to poor air quality as well as the unique local impacts felt by and within communities. So in 2017, the state legislature enacted AB 617 to create the Community Air Protection Program. Through that legislation, the Bay Area's Air District identified impacted communities in our region and established grants to partner with local community organizations to facilitate engagement within affected communities. So our organization is now beginning this work, working to expand our stakeholder engagement with the goal of prioritizing local strategies to improve our air quality. Some communities long impacted by air quality issues in the region have existing groups focused especially on environmental justice, but the Tri Valley has no such organizations to our knowledge. So our goal is to create one to sustain the ongoing work of implementing AB 617. To do this, we must raise awareness about our local air quality and its connection to the health of our communities. We need to identify and educate local stakeholders such as yourselves and engage these stakeholders to help us identify and prioritize solutions to advance for implementation. To the extent future funding may be available to implement clean air initiatives in our Tri Valley, putting together this infrastructure for local input and prioritization is a necessary first step. To understand why the Tri Valley was identified as an impacted community under AB 617, you're probably aware that the hills surrounding us create a localized airshed into which pollutants blow or are emitted and are trapped. Livermore being on the eastern downwind side of this area means our air quality is sometimes measurably worse than it is just to the west of us in Dublin or Pleasanton. The pollutants we're talking about in terms of air quality and health are ozone, which is formed mostly by regional emissions like tailpipe exhaust. Ozone doesn't typically originate here in our valley, but federal standards are nonetheless exceeded here every year when it blows in from the west. Second is fine particulate matter, also known as PM 2.5, meaning 2.5 microns or smaller. PM 2.5 comes from both regional and local sources, including diesel exhaust from Interstate 580 and 680 and wood smoke. Smoke can be from things like major wildfire events like we experienced in 2017 and 2018 or just burning wood in our own fireplaces in the winter when cool windless nights trap these particulates in our valley. And finally, toxic air contaminants are those emissions known to be hazardous to human health, like benzene among others, and may have local hotspots as sources. So now that we know this, it helps frame our work to come. We want to connect with local stakeholders to help characterize our current air quality. We want to analyze and summarize the resulting health effects. We want to develop a local emissions inventory to help with monitoring and we want to engage the community to develop impactful strategies to improve our air quality and community health. Ozone, as I mentioned, is mainly an issue in the summer months. In the recent years, Livermore exceeded the federal standards an average of about seven days per year. On these days, our local air quality becomes unhealthy, especially for sensitive groups like seniors, children, and those with asthma or lung disease. PM 2.5 levels are exceeded when the valley traps soot from diesel trucks, wood smoke, and road dust and industrial dust. The health effects of these pollutants are serious but aren't necessarily felt immediately. Ozone leads to lung inflammation and damage and can trigger asthma, leading to an increase in hospital admissions for respiratory issues or to long-term damage to other organs due to reduced lung function. PM 2.5 is very insidious for being so very tiny as to be able to defeat our body's natural defenses for filtering out larger particles. This can cause acute effects like heart attacks or chronic disease from systemic inflammation and oxidative stress, which we know to be silent killers. To address these very real health risks, our alliance wants to develop a local emissions inventory and in particular investigate local hotspots in proximity to sensitive populations like schools, daycares, and senior housing. And when we've done this, we want to engage with our communities to bring awareness of these issues and help advance strategies that can be implemented locally to improve our air. Here, the possibilities are truly wide-ranging, but through collaboration, we hope to identify those that are both impactful and feasible. So tonight, I'm asking for your help in connecting with the right stakeholders to help us assess our local air quality situation and to identify and later implement solutions. To date, we've had initial contacts with our local business groups, schools, community health, and environmental groups, and we've been able to begin to leverage the depth and breadth of scientific knowledge available with the labs being here. But we know we need to, our reach to go farther to truly represent the diversity of interests within our Tri Valley. Our original game plan was a lot of in-person outreach at community meetings, farmers markets, and other events. But at the time of COVID, we've had to rethink what strategies can best work to raise awareness and build new relationships. Your community development staff has already been engaged with helping facilitate our outreach efforts for which we are grateful. Going forward, state or regional funding could be identified that could be tailored to specific solutions. We want to learn how to connect the right resources to solving the right problems. To help us, I invite you and anyone interested to visit our website at www.tvaqca.org, which is for Tri Valley Air Quality Community Alliance, or get in touch with one of us on the Oversight Committee so we can add you to our stakeholder list and include you in future outreach. We're also working on a survey we plan to distribute in the coming weeks to start this conversation with the community. And we look forward to sharing what we learn in the future. So with that, let me thank you for your time tonight and your willingness to hear more about our efforts to address our air quality issues locally, and I'll be happy to take any suggestions or questions you may have.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Yaman. Yeah, we, so much for community outreach and in-person meetings. That's completely changed as you, as we're all recognizing. Is there any question from the council? Unfortunately, I don't have my, my hand raising here, a capability. So just go ahead and speak up.
Okay, so you can't even see me?
No, I can.
Okay. Okay. First of all, thanks for the shout out. I'm just so glad to see this presentation. And I haven't looked at the website, so I don't know if it's up there, but the information that's been put together. This presentation is just should go everywhere as far as I'm concerned. Is it on the website? And yeah.
If I could, it is on the website, tvaqca.org, and we're going to be adding some more content to in the coming weeks.
Okay, and community interviews might be a good place to go as well.
Those, if I may have been, ongoing for at least among sort of identified leaders. So we're hoping through those identified leaders to kind of help us drill down into other one-on-ones. In addition, I think when we send out the survey, we will ask people who want to talk to us more, either one-on-one or in a focus group type setting, to let us know that they're available for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions?
It's Bob Warner. I was wondering, when you say is it on the website, do we have links to this from our own website with respect to our climate action, et cetera? Maybe that question is to Mark. I don't know.
So I don't believe we have a current link on our website, but we could certainly do that. And I think your suggestion of under our climate action part of the website would make sense.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? Well, Ms. Yaman, thank you very much. Really appreciate the information.
Thank you for your time.
Certainly. Thank you. Okay, with that, we're going to go to item 2.02. This is the update from the Historic Preservation Commission Chair, Barbara Savoy, with our annual update. Barbara.
Good evening, Mayor Marshawn and members of the city council. The Historic Preservation Commission is charged with preserving, commemorating, and documenting Livermore's history, which can include structures, sites, natural features, and other significant objects in the city. The commission continues its preservation and commemoration work and over the course of the past year has recommended changes to a number of projects to accomplish this mission. As an example, the commission recommended changes to propose landscaping work at Carnegie Park, which is a property listed on the National Park Services National Register of Historic Places. The commission ensured the site's character defining features like the palms and path design were unaltered. The commission also approved fountain repairs conducted at the Ravenswood Historic Site, another Livermore property listed on the National Register, ensuring that the new work is compatible with the fountain design and conforms to all required National Park Service guidelines. More recently, the commission suggested policy changes to the ISB specific plan to better preserve historical features within the planning area. The Historic Preservation Commission reacts to projects to ensure they do not impair Livermore's history, but it also preemptively identifies and protects such resources. To that end, the commission began work this year to update the 1988 citywide historic resources inventory, which catalogs all significant and potentially significant properties in the city. It also began drafting a historic context statement which documents four historic themes in Livermore like agriculture and agriculture. Finally, it will review modifications to the historic preservation ordinance. The city council will ultimately review and approve these historic resources updates later this year. Finally, Livermore's historic preservation efforts have been recognized by the state of California. In January of this year, the Office of Historic Preservation in California State Parks presented the 2019 Governor's Historic Preservation Awards during a ceremony in Sacramento. Five projects were recognized for their achievements in preserving California's heritage. Livermore's Railroad Depot Preservation and Relocation Project was one of the projects recognized. The Historic Preservation Commission will continue to preserve, commemorate, and document Livermore's rich history and looks forward to working with the city historian, Eric Gill, and then community for to protect Livermore's history. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Savoy, thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, very good. It's good to be back. Okay, we got our technical difficulties squared away here. Good seeing everybody tonight. Thank you very much for your patience. It's a, we're still getting used to all this stuff. So with that, we're going to go to the Citizens Forum. If there are no questions for Ms. Savoy. All right, we already received several comments tonight on Citizens Forum. Question to the city clerk, is there, are there any more comments on Citizens Forum? These are items that are not on the agenda. The city council can neither deliberate nor take action on these items that may be brought up for future discussion. So with that, please keep your comments to 500 words or less. You can access by either Zoom Q and A or through YouTube. And now I hand it off to the city clerk. Madam City Clerk, do we have any comments?
Thank you, Mayor Marshawn. City Clerk's office, please read the comments received over Zoom.
This is from Joseph Ruby, R U B A Y, Rubey. Introduction of Joseph Rubey, candidate for State Assembly District 16. Longtime resident of the district. I have lived in Alamo since I was in high school, where I was fortunate to compete in school sports with both Livermore and Granada High. I have served a number of years on the Alamo Improvement Association. I strongly support local control of planning. You find out more about me at my website, www.joerubay.com.
Okay, thank you very much.
Welcome, and that's the only one on Zoom.
Okay, very good. Thank you. With that, we will close the Citizens Forum and go on to the consent calendar. These are items that are typically routine in nature and are usually passed in one motion. We did receive comments on the paving from Stephen Dunbar. Some excellent comments. I always appreciate his personal perspective. Is there any item that anyone wishes to pull for additional comment? Or do I have a motion?
I actually, I don't have, I don't want to pull any, but I did have a comment on actually several of them. Just because it was a particularly full agenda. Can I, you want to, can I make, how do you like, make the comments first?
Just if there's, if there's no, if you're not looking for discussion, you're just looking for comments, feel free.
Sure. Okay. First of all, item 4.02 is a request for, for us to approve the Open Gov software for budget and support. And what I really appreciated about that is how we're moving from what's been described as an antiquated budget platform and we're going really cutting edge. We're going to be able to do better high-quality, high-level priorities setting and analysis. And we want to be able to be transparent. This allows us to be that. This is one of the things Open Gov is known for, and I just, I really am delighted to see us doing that. So that was one thing. Item 4.8 and 4.15 are both around improving housing and homelessness. So one is money habitat for humanity for housing rehabilitation. In these difficult times, I just, I was just glad to see that we have money that's going where, you know, to some of the most vulnerable. And similarly, there is, 4.15 is, I think it's three point some odd million dollars going towards Vineyard Housing, the Vineyard Housing project. Again, just delighted with that. And finally, 4.16 is our check-in, check, check the box on the Inclusion Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee. And I just wanted to remind people that they should apply to the working group and, you know, just help us move forward on being a city that is inclusive of everybody. So that was, those were my four comments.
Great. Well, thank you. And to your point about joining up with the Equity and Inclusion Committee. Marching in the streets is easy. Yeah, that's, that's an hour of your time. You get down there, you make your point. The really difficult work, the real hard part is when you start working with the community and having these conversations and night after night and hour after hour of public hearings and public comments and public input. That's where the real work happens. It's not just getting out onto the street. It's actually getting involved. And to Councilmember Monroe's point, we want people to be involved in this process because now's your opportunity. So certainly.
Let me just say one more word about that. It's, it's, I would, sure, to your point, yes, it's easy to march in the streets, but it's also easy to complain on Nextdoor. It's easy to, or on Facebook. What I really like about this committee is that it's going to take people who are from all different walks of life. We really want to make sure that the entire spectrum of the community is represented. Bring everyone together so that people can listen to those with different views and express them, and everybody can be heard, which really does lead to better understanding.
Well, and this is the point. We are very, I made this last time, but we're very limited as far as what we can do legally to require people's, you know, behavior. We can, we can tell people that they have to wear masks. Most people do. We can tell people they have to stop at traffic signals or traffic stop signs. Most people do. But it's very difficult to get people to change the way they think. And that's going to be, and you can't legislate the way people think. So this is going to be a much deeper conversation because what we're after here is working to change the way people think and to become a more empathetic community and a more understanding and open and accepting community. That's the changing the way people think, and that's a much larger dialogue. So I certainly commend the efforts of, of the Subcommittee Vice Mayor Bob Warner and you, Councilmember Monroe, for, for stepping up and making all that, making all that happen. And again, to your point about Vineyard 2.0, you know, we've had some people get up and complain that we're spending this kind of money on Vineyard 2.0. But the most important part of this is it's not just getting people off the streets and giving them a place to live temporarily. It's giving them the skills and the services that they need so that they can lift themselves out of homelessness permanently. That's the real value here. And we can continue to move people through this. It's not meant to be just a residence hall. It's meant to be a way to facilitate people lifting themselves off the street permanently and becoming, being able to contribute again. So very important. Thank you for pointing that out. Vice Mayor Warner.
Yeah, I wanted to ask Mark or maybe Doug Alessio, because the applications for the working group are out now. Could you just say a few words about what the process is, timing and everything?
Sorry about that. This is Mark Roberts, your city manager. So we do have the application process open at this point. And my closure date, Marie, do you happen to recall the closure date off the top of your head? I'll give you a second there. Well, after the item closes.
Mark, this is Doug Alessio. It's August 7th is the closing date.
Very good. After the closing date, there'll be a set of interviews by the Subcommittee. So that is made up of Vice Mayor Bob Warner and Councilmember Trish Monroe. And we, the council document that is on your agenda this evening notes that that working group is up to 18 members from a wide and diverse backgrounds within the community. So after the interview process, the Subcommittee will then recommend the 18 members back to the full council, who will appoint the Subcommittee at that point.
I have one other note on that. I was going to attempt to do this in Spanish, but I'm, I just can't, I can't do it. But if, if there is somebody who can, the applications are available in Spanish. And I would love to have that said that way. I wish I could do it myself. So.
But Councilmember Carley, you had a question?
Oh, I, can I continue on this?
Certainly. Sorry, I just saw a hand raised.
Sorry, the, we want to say, we're looking for, say, 18 members for the working group directly. But the idea here is that each, the working group will be picking certain topics to explore in more depth and come up with recommendations and plans, deliverables, et cetera. So there's really two opportunities for the community here. One is a pulling a laboring or on the working group directly. But it's also possible to, for a lesser time commitment to work on specific topics with members of the working group. I wanted to point out, there are really two things that people can do. They have different time commitments, really, and that, I think, as Doug Alessio and others who helped us develop the application, no prior experience is needed, but really, I would say a passion for making things better is what we're after. So that, that's it on that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilmember Carley.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to point out regarding item 4.07. This is a contract with Engineering Services to look at our improving ADA requirements downtown. And again, for those that aren't familiar with what ADA is, that's the American for Disabilities Act. And I think what's interesting is that this week marks the 30th anniversary of the signing of the original legislation that put the requirements in for these ADA improvements. So I think it's, it's a recognition that we still have work to do. And I congratulate the staff for recognizing that and reaching out for Engineering Services to, to provide the kind of look to what we can do to continue to improve our downtown and making it more accessible to everyone. So thank you.
Well, thank you. And Councilmember Carley, you bring up one of my favorite pieces of asset management trivia. And that is we have over 8,000 wheelchair ramps on, on our sidewalks valued at 41 million. And that is, we have over 8,000 wheelchair ramps on our sidewalks valued at $41 million. And we went through it, as Councilmember Coomer pointed out, many of those had to be changed because after we had installed them, the, the, the style had changed, the way they were installed had been modified by the state. So we had to go back in and replace a number of them. But 8,000 wheelchair ramps worth $41 million, so this is a significant commitment. And again, just a point on Open Gov, pointed out by Councilmember Monroe. Even though this is a great cutting-edge system, just a shout out to Mr. Alessio, that we have been an award-winning, our budgets have been award-winning for at least seven or eight years, maybe even longer than that. And the last few budgets that you guys have done have just been so easy to read, certainly user-friendly. Going back to, I go back to the days when they were cuneiform clay tablets. And now the ones that we have, the budget that you produce has been fantastic. So we, even, even without this cutting-edge technology, you have produced award-winning budgets. And just a congratulations and thank you for that transparency. And now getting you some additional tools, you'll be able to do an even better job.
Acceptance of the consent calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Carlyle, seconded by Councilmember Monroe. I see no hands raised, is there any discussion on that motion? All in favor, signify, oh, I'm sorry, roll call please, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Monroe.
Bye.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Carlyle.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. Okay, moving on to 5.01, this is the Development Code Amendment 20-003, this is regarding temporary signs.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your City Manager. And this evening, we will be getting our presentation from Susan Frost from our Community Development Department, giving us an overview of the proposal before you.
This is Bob Warner, I'm going to abstain from this thing, so I want to do that before anything gets started.
Good evening, Mayor Marshawn and Councilmembers, I hope you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I am Susan Frost, Special Projects Coordinator, and as you indicated, this is the Temporary Sign Ordinance update. Temporary signs in our right-of-way are often unattended and forgotten and not maintained, especially campaign signs. Prior to Livermore's March 2020 election, there was increased vandalism and theft of political signs placed in the public right-of-way. As a result, the council directed staff to develop ordinance options regarding the placement of signs in the public right-of-way. First Amendment rights protect both commercial and non-commercial speech, but affords non-commercial speech a greater degree of protection. Commercial temporary signs are sponsored by a commercial entity, for example, real estate signs, temporary retail signs, and now opening signs. Non-commercial temporary signs provide commentary or advocacy on topics, for example, campaign signs. Under the current ordinance, temporary signs are prohibited in street, median, sidewalks, utility poles and public property. The only location allowed in the public right-of-way is generally within 10 feet of the back of curb in landscaped areas. You can see examples of these in the flyer on page 237 of the agenda that was prepared for campaign signs. Staff considered several options for addressing the concerns with temporary signs, including prohibiting the placement of all temporary signs in the right-of-way, limiting temporary signs in the right-of-way to certain times of day, or limiting temporary signs in the right-of-way to a specific time in advance of events such as election dates. Based on the review of options, staff is recommending the following revisions to the ordinance for temporary signs in the public right-of-way. And so that includes restricting those signs to daylight hours between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM. And they shall not be displayed more than 90 days before an event and then removed five days after the event. And they must be stake signs that are pushed or hammered into the ground and no taller than 36 inches. And the ordinance does clarify the definition of the stake sign. And that the definition would apply to any of these signs with a single stick or multiple sticks as long as the sign area and height are consistent with the regulations. In addition, the code amendment clarifies enforcement of these regulations, and Neighborhood Preservation will be developing protocols for enforcement. For the downtown area, the amendments include the same standards as are currently in the downtown specific plan, but with the addition of a time of day limitation of 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. The Planning Commission considered the amendment on, at their July 7th meeting. They were concerned with the time of day limitations and the limitation of 90 days prior to events. They adopted a resolution recommending the City Council deny the proposed development code as proposed. However, they also recommended that the council consider a 30-day limitation on temporary signs prior to an event. Staff continues to recommend the 90-day limitation for temporary signs prior to an event. This is consistent with past practices in the city and would better withstand legal scrutiny. With that, staff recommends the City Council introduce an ordinance approving Development Code Amendment 20-003 temporary signs consistent with staff recommendations, and we are available for questions.
Okay, any questions for staff at this point?
Yeah, I've got one, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Coomer.
Yeah, so if I'm reading this right, the, do signs have to be removed every day outside of the hours that they're allowed to be up?
That is correct.
Wow, so during a campaign, they'll have to have people going up and down the streets, taking signs up and putting signs up and taking them down all day long, several, twice a day?
Well, the intent is to address the concerns with the temporary signs being left unattended, particularly overnight, those when they, that's when they get stolen or vandalized.
Okay, but so, just to be clear, there's a differentiation between the commercial signs and the non-commercial.
Right, right, no, I understand that.
But the commercial signs would have to be taken down, not the campaign signs.
Gotcha, okay, that's what I want to make clear, because that wasn't real clear to me, thank you.
So, so to be clear, both types of signage within the public right-of-way would not, would need to not overnight under these proposals. So based on council direction, you will recall that one of the options we were told to consider for temporary signs was to limit those hours in which those could be displayed. If we are displaying it on private property, be that commercial property, residential property or industrial property, those do not have any hour limitations and are not governed by this part. This is only for signs that are located within the public right-of-way.
Councilmember Carlyle, questions?
Yes, thanks, I just wanted to follow up on the 90-day and the point you made about legal scrutiny. Can you help me understand that, is that because the state has a 90-day period of time? And if we were to adopt 90 days, you would agree with what the state proposes? Is that the legal scrutiny that we're concerned about?
So this area of the law, Councilmember, is not as perfectly clear, but I'm going to have your city attorney, Jason Alcol, weigh in on why staff believes that the 90-day standard is likely to withstand judicial scrutiny.
Thank you, Mark, this is Jason Alcol, your city attorney. Councilmember Carlyle, yes, the California Outdoor Advertising Act has a provision that deals with the installation of temporary political signs. And that particular statute has a limitation that requires they not be placed sooner than 90 days prior to the scheduled election. That particular statute has undergone scrutiny previously by the courts, both at the appellate court level and at the Supreme Court level. Now, this particular clause has not been focused on, but that question has been presented to the courts, and they have chosen not to find that particular provision unconstitutional. So that's why we're recommending that we follow 90 days in our local ordinance, which is a practice adopted by numerous other agencies who have time limitations on how early the sign can be placed locally. I believe San Ramon and a few others have that 90-day limitation as well.
One other item is staff was trying to address was the fact that now essentially the ability to vote by mail or vote remotely, and that that process starts much earlier than election day. The, originally, many years ago, we had the 30-day limitation as a practice, with the understanding that all votes were actually placed on the election day. Now, many people vote either days or weeks in advance of the actual election date.
Councilmember Monroe? You have a question?
Yeah, I, I'm just, so I'm sort of thinking about the purpose of this, particularly with regard to politics, or, you know, to put, you know, to a political campaign of one kind or another. And the idea is that what the signs are is a fairly cheap way to get the, a message out of one kind or another. You know, is it, is it proposition, a person, or whatever? But I guess one of my questions is, is, what are the pluses and minuses of having this take place in, you know, effectively? This seems like it would limit it in a way that would mean, would they effectively show up on private property? And I'm okay with that, but I'm just trying to think about what that does in terms of other options, in terms of equity, or in terms of accessibility to ways for people who want to run for office, does it matter? I'm not sure it does, and I'm not sure whether we should even be considering it, but it really...
Councilmember Monroe, is this a question or is this part of the debate? Because I still need to open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, you know, I think it's part of the debate, I take it back. I'm going to go away now.
It's okay, you're fine, I just wanted, it started to get a little more philosophical. It went beyond factual.
Absolutely, you're right.
It went beyond factual to philosophical, so I thought, well, let's see where we're going on this. Okay, well, very good then, so any more questions for staff at this point? Okay, with that, I'm going to open the public hearing. For item 5.01, this is regarding commercial and non-commercial signs. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments from either Zoom or YouTube?
We do, Mayor Marshawn, City Clerk's office, please read the comments received over Zoom. This comment is from Evan Branning, and it reads, "During the Measure P campaign, hundreds of signs were destroyed and left littered around our town. I was a campaign manager for Measure P, and I fully understand the importance of campaign signs. However, given that they are large-scale, single-use plastic signs that create a lot of waste for little return, I encourage council to take steps to reduce their usage." And that's the only item on Zoom so far. And no comments have been received over YouTube.
Okay. All right, well, in that case, we will, thank you for your comments. I'm going to bring it back to the council and close the public hearing. So now, we'll bring it back to the council. Councilmember Monroe, you may continue.
I pretty much was done, I'm just trying to think about how this, this plays out in terms of if we're trying to open the electoral process to a variety of people running for office. On the other hand, I really, really agree with Evan Branning's comment, I mean, it is very wasteful. So I'm, I am, I'm torn.
Okay, well, yeah, I agree, I kind of disagree, I don't think they're cheap. They, and one of the things that I wanted to bring back is the difference between stake signs, and I guess it's an idea of semantics, the stake signs versus the, the hangers, the wire hangers, which are becoming much more popular. I go back to the days where we used wooden stakes, but now pretty much everybody's using different, two different types of wire hangers, sort of a U shape and then an H shape. But as long as they can clarify that in the, in the ordinance. But I agree, I've gotten a lot of complaints, and Councilmember Coomer spoke eloquently about this when this first was brought up, the idea that these do litter the landscape. I mean, there were a lot of signs that were cut up, the wire frames were thrown into the street along the public rights-of-way. If they're not in somebody's yard, there's nobody there to maintain them. And if somebody doesn't come by and fix them, they end up blighting the landscape. So this, that was, that was a complaint that I heard previously. They're not necessarily cheap, but if they are in somebody's yard, there's somebody there to take care of it. And, and then it doesn't end up, it's quite as much litter. Councilmember Carlyle, you had a point.
Yeah, thank you. Let's see, I, I think my first reaction to this when I saw it was a little bit like Councilmember Coomer's was, wow, you're expecting people to take them up and put them, put them up and then take them down every day if they're in the public right of way. Now, again, I think, City Manager clarified that if it's on private property, they can stay up 24 hours a day. But we're talking about along streets and so on, so I guess I'm very concerned about, about that. I also think that, and the only thing I can think of is, when I worked at Sandia, one of our complaints in the management or even many of the staff was that if somebody got cancer, we all got chemo. And that's what this feels like. We had a few bad actors, or whatever, however you want to describe it, at the last election, that seemed to find it necessary to go around and destroy signs. And I just think we're dealing, we're trying to solve a problem in the wrong way. We just need people to behave differently than they did the last couple of elections. And I think, I don't think having limitations on the time of day when signs can be up in the public area is the right approach. So I'm, I guess I agree with Planning Commission's point in denying the ordinance, but would be happy to support a 90-day period of time prior to the event. Thank you.
Let's see, just to clarify a point, I understood the city attorney to say that they couldn't be put out more than the 90 days. But as far as shortening the period of time, it was really a maximum rather than a minimum. And just to, I see that your light came on there, Mr. City Attorney.
Correct, so the statute says they cannot go up sooner than 90 days. There are local cases that have taken the question of how soon or how close to an election you can limit those signs. One decision that is well-known that came out of Contra Costa County had a limitation that prohibited signs from going up earlier than 30 days prior to an election. So you couldn't have it 30 days prior to the election, 31 days, but you could have it 30. That was found to be unconstitutional, an unconstitutional restraint on free speech. That is not a published opinion, but that is anecdotal evidence to take into account as far as how a trial court may determine that issue. So they wanted to give enough time for the sign to be relevant to the campaign. In that particular case, the court determined that 30 days was inadequate.
So, so we're splitting the difference, I guess. As the City Manager pointed out, it used to be that there was, it wasn't codified, but there was a gentleman's agreement that signs were not put out until 30 days before the election. Well, now with the advent of absentee ballots, the election voting can start a month, almost a month before the actual election date. So if we had a 30-day window before voting started... had a 30 day window before voting started. So actually, it's it's a total of 60 days before the election. But 30 days before balloting started. To me, that would be a good compromise because again, what I hear is people are tired of seeing these things littering the landscape for for months and then trying to get them taken down because people are a lot more inclined to put them up. And there's not nearly the amount of enthusiasm to take them down. And people are taking down signs. I was finding other campaign signs a month after the election was over. So and taking those down. So you're so where we land on 60 days before the election? So it's 30 days before the election starts, but it's two months before the actual election day.
Mayor Marshawn, this is Jason Don't call your city attorney. I understand your arguments and I appreciate it. I would be remiss if I didn't indicate that there's no support that I could find elsewhere where that particular time limit has undergone constitutional scrutiny to determine whether or not that was adequate to maintain and preserve the First Amendment. That being said, if it is applied, if the standard is applied equally to commercial and non-commercial signs, you have a good opportunity to withstand judicial scrutiny. And that's why the ordinance is structured the way it is. An alternative could be to prohibit campaign signs and commercial signs 100% in the public right of way. So you can't put either of those signs in the public right of way. That too would withstand judicial scrutiny because they're being treated equally. So we're dealing with two different masters here, one of which is we have to treat commercial and non-commercial equally. And within that, we have to respect the desire to address campaigns and get that message out. 60 days has not been evaluated to my into my knowledge to determine whether that would withstand judicial scrutiny. But you have a good argument and you have good information. Question is with for my in my mind is whether the court would agree.
But then someone would have to file a lawsuit to 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 call for that question.
That is correct.
And if they filed a lawsuit, we could come back and modify the ordinance or the yeah, the code.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Coumber.
If if this is a question for the city attorney. Are is there an ordinance requiring you know, defining fines or actions that can be taken against campaigns or candidates if they don't take down their signs within a certain prescribed length of time? Because that is a problem and and that's where the a lot of the blight comes from, I think. And I think that's something that should be dealt with at some point here, rather than the idea of having cars driving around first thing in the morning and 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 both times that it it at drive time, it it commute times and stuff like that to picking up and putting out signs. It's is seems a little much to me, but I was more curious about what what whether the what happens when somebody doesn't take down their signs.
Councilmember Coumber, this is Jason Don't call once again. The courts have supported those type of restrictions and requirements that a sign be collected after the date it was related to. So if a sign is up past a certain amount of time post an election, yes, citations can be issued in that event, and those restrictions have withstood judicial scrutiny.
Cool. Do we have such an ordinance?
I will defer to Susan. I believe there is a requirement in cities in Livermore's ordinance to remove the signs so many days after an election. I don't know off the top of my head, though.
Yes, we do have a excuse. We do have a requirement in the ordinance that they need to be removed five days following the election.
Okay, and is if not, is there a consequence?
So so I will say this again, this is Jason. I will answer this particular question. Then I'll turn to Mark. It looks like he wanted to speak to it as well. Neighborhood preservation is one of the bodies, as well as certain public works folks that will remove signs from the public right of way that are installed inappropriately. I think they would continue their action. I don't believe they have a history of issuing citations, but that is possible.
Mark?
Thank you. And and that was exactly what I was going to say. While it's possible for us to issue citations, traditionally what we do is contact the campaign itself, encourage them to comply. And for the last few signs that aren't ultimately picked up, we do use city staff to perform that function.
Thank you. I just really wanted to make sure we have an enforcement mechanism in place.
Okay. Any other questions or comments at this point? I would be willing to entertain a motion. I personally like the idea of having 30 days before the event, which is 60 days before the election to reduce the amount of blight. The doesn't sound like there's interest in limiting the use of of the public right of way for either commercial or non-commercial signs.
So can I make a suggestion that we that I move denial of the Development Code Amendment? And we vote on that and then we can pick up on the the days prior to the event?
Well, how about you make a motion and then I'll make a friendly amending motion?
All right, I'll move denial of the Development Code Amendment, the way it's written.
Okay, and I will make a friendly amending motion to take the Plante Commission's recommendation to limit putting signs out until 30 days before the the beginning of the voting. So since voting begins with the mailing out of the absentee ballots, that's typically a month before the election. That actually gives a 60 day window, but 30 days before the receipt of the absentee ballots. Mr. City Attorney?
So thank you for that. Thank you for acknowledging me, Mr. Mayor. With regard to this item, the amendment is hostile to the main motion. The main motion is to deny the ordinance. You did make it as a friendly amendment. There has not been a second to it right now. So Councilmember Carling could amend his motion, his original motion to change it to accept your edit. Or he could proceed with his main motion and then seek a second. But the the modification is hostile because one is saying to deny and the other one says to proceed with changes. So they're they're apples and oranges.
Okay, so what do I have to do to accept? I'll accept his friendly amendment. How's that?
I just try to be friendly, you know? Hostile is not the way I work.
I will second Councilmember Carling's original motion. And maybe we'll take it from there.
Okay, just for clear record, Councilmember Carling, do you want to stand by your original motion with a second from Councilmember Coumber?
Why don't we do that? And then we can discuss, we can, we can. Yes, we can do that, right? We can vote on that and then consider the period of time before the event.
Correct. So right now, the motion on the floor would be a motion by Councilmember Carling to deny the introduction of the ordinance. That's been seconded by Councilmember Coumber.
Okay, so I will make an amending motion to move the window to place signs 30 days before the beginning of absentee voting. So 30 days before the absentee ballots are are mailed out.
Mayor Marshawn, this is your city attorney. Once again, that would be a counter motion since it's actually looking to do not directly opposite, but substantially opposite of what the main motion is. The main motion is to deny. Your amending motion changes that to an approve with changes. So that's a separate motion.
Okay. So to approve with changes. Is there a second for that? Okay, dies for lack of a second. All right, so we're back to signs being placed 90 days before the election.
No, I move that we deny, I move that we deny the the proposed amendment and that. And then if we deny that, we are free to take up another discussion about when we would allow signs to go up. That was what I was trying to achieve.
Correct. And that's the motion on the floor right now is a motion by Councilmember Carling to deny the introduction of the motion, and that's been seconded by Councilmember Coumber.
So if that passes, then there can be a second motion to modify. But if we've already denied the Development Code, then that's that's finished.
Definitely. So, Mr. Mayor, at that point, you can solicit an alternative motion, which is when you can proceed with your motion to take the rest of the ordinance that's before you and then suggest modifications.
Okay, all right. In that case, we have a motion. We have a second by Councilmember Coumber. Any discussion of that motion? Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe?
Sure.
Councilmember Coumber?
Yes.
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Warner has abstained from the record. Mayor Marshawn?
Aye. Okay, with that, now that that passes, I would like to make a a motion that we modify the the code to allow signs to be placed 30 days before the absentee ballots are received or are mailed out. That'd be an easier way to 30 days before the absentee ballots are mailed out. Because that we would have that information from the city clerk, from the registered voters. Mr. City Clerk, Mr. City Attorney?
So that would work. I'm not sure we could retool the ordinance before you. Again, we came back with a recommendation. So you have one ordinance before you. If that is the will of the council and that does get approved, we can go back and redraft the ordinance or the amendments before you and return with that for your consideration at a future meeting for that'll be. But when we come back, that will be the actual introduction of the ordinance, not a second reading.
Okay, very good.
Does that make sense?
Okay.
Yeah, I second.
Yeah.
Okay, I made the main motion seconded by Councilmember Carling. Any discussion of that motion?
Honorable Mayor?
Yes.
Your city manager, just a question, because the one other item, in other words, there's obviously many changes that are mostly minor and administrative, but the other major change was the hours that temporary signs would be permitted in the public right of way. Is that included or excluded? In other words, would temporary signs in the public right of way be allowed 24 hours a day or in the timeframes included in the ordinance in your motion?
Oh, I I did not change. The only thing that I changed was the the window of time. So the signs can be placed.
For 24 hours.
Yeah.
All right. So to clarify, there are two changes from the from the changes in from the proposed ordinance in front of you. And that would be to be to have the timeframe that you can display signs be not limited to daylight hours, so 24 hours a day in public right of way. And the second change essentially is to be displayed no sooner than 30 days prior to the ballots being mailed out before an election.
Okay, that general agreement here?
Yes. Very good.
Okay, any any further discussion on the motion? Mr. City Clerk, Mr. City Attorney? Okay, I see no hands. Yeah, Councilmember Monroe, you had a question?
Yeah, I I mean, I I honestly, this is not any issue I would go to the mat on. I I just would point out that this effectively makes what has been custom in Livermore extends that time a little bit out. You know, by a week or two, which, like I said, I don't care particularly, but it's just an interesting observation.
Well, no, you see, there has been no limitation. You can put out signs whenever you want.
I understand that. I also I also have been accustomed. So that that's all. I I look, I like I said, I'm I'm we've we've got a whole lot of things on this agenda that are you know, big thing. This is this is a little bit here and a little bit there. So I don't care. I just thought it was interesting. So.
Okay. Point noted. There you go.
Sure.
Okay, with that, Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Member Monroe?
Sure.
Councilmember Coumber?
Aye.
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Warner has abstained from the record. Mayor Marshawn?
Aye. Okay, well, thank you very much. Moving on to 6.01, this is the oral report from the Director of Emergency Services. That's otherwise known as our city manager.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Mark Roberts, your city manager and director of emergency services. And to clarify on that last item, as we wrap that up, that we will return with an ordinance that incorporates the direction that the council just gave to staff at a future council meeting for a first reading of the ordinance revised in the manner that the council has directed. And with that, I'll be switching hats here. So as Director of Emergency Services, you have tasked me with a number of activities related to the COVID-19 emergency. So we'll start off very briefly with just an update on our numbers. The numbers of COVID cases, both within Alameda County and in the city of Livermore continue to climb. The city of Livermore's numbers are climbing significantly faster than our neighbors in the Tri Valley. We currently have 429 cases in the city of Livermore. And our case rate per 100,000 residents now ranks essentially fifth in Alameda County jurisdictions. So while the county average is still significantly above where we are, we in Livermore have significantly more cases than Dublin or Pleasanton or a number of other communities in Alameda County. We continue to monitor that information as your staff. And you have directed me to to take a number of steps based on that. So I wanted to next move on to take a look at an update on our street closures. The city council has directed that we consider street closures as part of our overall strategy in downtown to reinvigorate businesses that are located in downtown. As you'll know, the current county order allows outdoor dining with social distancing, a requirement that essentially tables be have at least six feet, six feet between occupants at different tables, that the tables be located outside, and then a number of other standards be applied to people who are actually using those areas. To facilitate that outdoor dining, the council so directed. And I implemented essentially a far reaching set of closure requirements that essentially turned about half of your downtown parking into outdoor dining areas. So those areas have been implemented. The areas have been made safe with barriers and railings around the enclosed areas, and they do continue to be relatively popular. In addition to that, we have made changes to city owned property, most notably at Flagpole Plaza, where we have removed the turf area. We have installed disintegrated granite DG in that area and allowed outdoor dining to take place in that location for businesses that did not have adjacent parking spaces next to them. This week, this last weekend, we closed the street beginning very early on Saturday morning and ultimately concluded that closure on Monday morning by removing the barriers at that time. In the area between McLeod Street and K Street, there was a partial opening of the street. And that was meant to address the issue of the severe and negative impacts that had happened to retailers during the time that the street was completely closed. We heard fairly universally from our retailers that that was a devastating event, having the street completely closed. Anecdotal information from retailers more recently notes that the street closures, even though they are partial, are still having a significant and negative impact on all of the retailers in our downtown. So I've directed staff to actually do outreach to all of our businesses in town, the retailers, the restaurateurs, and so that we can get more information on are those street closures actually helpful to business? Are they hurting business? Or is it essentially something that is neither helpful nor hurtful? We had staff this weekend also do an analysis of how often the street is actually used for pedestrian traffic. Very, very few people are actually walking in the streets. During the first closure, we did have more people downtown all at once, and the street areas were used. In the subsequent closures, the the pedestrian traffic in the streets has been very, very light. We will continue to monitor that as we go forward for this coming week. Council also directed me to consider different strategies to improve the use of face coverings. Council also directed me to consider different strategies to improve the use of face coverings. Of course, face covering are required to be worn by anyone who is outside, who is likely to come in contact with someone within thirty feet of them. And so, of course, in the downtown area, almost by definition, the moment you step into that area, you do need to be wearing a face mask because there are people throughout the area in there. During the first few weeks of street closure, we were noting that our mask compliance rate, that is, those people who were effectively and consistently wearing face masks, was down about half of the total number of folks and at times less than that. Council directed that I take steps necessary to try and prove that number overall. We've done a number of strategies, including reaching out on social media, putting clear notices at the entries to the areas where the street has been closed on First Street, putting information in our informational kiosks downtown. And in addition, this last week, starting on Thursday night, we had staff from Neighborhood Preservation approaching those who were not properly masked and offering to give them a face mask for their use. That generally was well-received. So essentially, the additional signage, the social media and the handing out of masks has boosted our numbers significantly. So we're in the eighty to ninety percent compliance right now. Still not high enough to meet the standard that Alameda County is looking for. We're looking for compliance, you know, above ninety-five percent to actually protect everyone in the downtown. So we still have a little bit of ways to go in that area, but we did make significant improvement. And your staff recommends that we give that option at least a little bit more time to try and be effective. In addition, we have considered, and you have authorized through your nuisance ordinance, the ability for us to issue citations, essentially administrative citations. They're similar to an infraction or a ticket, so it is not a misdemeanor, but it is a, it's a fine. And the first one of those in your nuisance code would be a hundred dollars for the first-time offense. Ultimately, that remains an option and certainly am looking for council direction if there is interest in us pursuing that. At this time, we think we have a little more flexibility, maybe to get compliance to move just a little bit higher without having to use infractions. Obviously, on, that remains one of our options. Finally, we continue to sort of manage the overall downtown. At various times, as folks are in downtown, compliance is quite high. That is generally earlier in the evening. As the evening stretches on, compliance generally drops off, social distancing drops off. And our staff noted, both from the Police Department and Neighborhood Preservation, that it's inversely related to alcohol consumption. So as the evening wears on, people become less diligent. Crowds form, people clump more actively. So for that reason, my existing orders are that we do a last call at ten-thirty and that essentially establishments in the downtown are closed at eleven. The outdoor dining ordinance from Alameda County is just that. It is meant to facilitate functions where the primary activity is outdoor dining. From staff observation and our experience previously and actually during COVID-19, as we move past ten-thirty at night, while some people are still consuming food, the primary activity in the area switches from essentially having dinner or dining outdoors to alcohol consumption. So from that perspective, your Emergency Services Director felt that since the purpose was to comply with the county order and to protect public health and safety, that's why we ultimately don't keep essentially the restaurants open until 2:00 AM like the bars. At this point, bars are still prohibited. You're only permitted to essentially serve alcohol if you are a full-service restaurant as we move forward. So with that, that wraps up essentially your staff report. I'm available for questions. We continue to do outreach and work with our downtown businesses. You did receive information this evening in your packet about a number of questions and requests from certain businesses, and staff's prepared to answer questions that you may have related to those as well.
Okay, thank you. And from my perspective, our number one priority in our city is public safety. So I think that if we can't get greater compliance, then I would agree with possibly going with an infraction. Just to, I think, once you have that, that threat, you get greater compliance. But what this is about, it's about public, public health, public safety, and that continues to be our top priority. Another thing, we've heard concerns from some of our restaurants about some of the third-party online food ordering services, things like Grubhub, DoorDash, and what they perceive as excessive fees. Some cities have implemented a limit. For example, Fremont is fifteen percent. What about looking at something like that too? Because it's difficult for businesses to make it in this environment already. Of course, it's also difficult for the online food service providers as well. So any sort of those, those gig jobs. How can we sort of thread this needle to make it work a little bit better for everybody?
So during an emergency, the city has the ability to enact ordinances and limitations on price gouging. And so we have essentially adopted ordinances like that previously during emergencies. Generally, on the other hand, the city does not invest in or facilitate essentially price setting or essentially maximum price allowances by the government on private party activity. So those are sort of the two extremes. So if it is essentially a version of trying to limit price gouging during an emergency, you know, we do have a pattern to do that. Enforcement of that provides some challenges, but ultimately, if that is the pleasure of the council, your staff can take a look and see what our other surrounding communities have done in that area. Again, we are familiar with some communities trying to limit the delivery fees to be no more than the fifteen percent of the bill of the item being delivered with a certain minimum. And if that's something that the entire council wants staff to take a look at, we can certainly examine that and, and take a look at that. That would potentially be possible to implement first through an order and then having the council confirm that through a ratifying action.
Okay, Councilmember, thank you. Councilmember Carling?
Yeah, thanks, Mark. Thanks very much for the report. Just a couple of comments. I, as you know, I ride my bike around town quite a bit every day. And I guess I would agree with your point about downtown people wearing masks at eighty or ninety percent. I was, on Thursday, I was down looking at Farmer's Market. In previous Farmer's Market, I would have said that virtually nobody was wearing a mask to or from the Farmer's Market. On Thursday, nearly everybody was within a one or two block from the Farmer's Market were wearing masks. So I do agree with you there. But away from the Farmer's Market, I, I find that very few people are wearing masks, and I just am wondering how we can continue to get the message out. I mean, there was a letter to the editor in The Independent last week about putting a sign up along, over Fourth Street, you know, where we were near Carnegie, or I guess Carnegie. Maybe is that something that we could do to encourage people to wear masks? Is that something we could do to make it visible to people driving down Fourth Street? We put it up there for the rodeo and Fourth of July and other events like that. Could we do something like that? Would that be possible?
It is certainly possible. While that's normally a very popular venue for nonprofits and others to reserve and sometimes are reserved many months or a year in advance, there may be some openings because some of the events, which are traditionally advertised, may not be happening. So let staff take a look and see if we've got openings there. But if there is an opening, certainly the city can utilize that as one of the places that we could put some messaging out about face coverings.
Good, thank you. Just another point, I was, there's a BMX park, as many people know, down off Stanley on the west side, on the south side of Stanley, west of Shadowcliff. So I went by there. I guess Sunday, there must have been some event because I have never seen as many cars in there. There's probably thirty cars there, so I would say sixty-ish people. I'll bet there was less than twenty percent had face coverings. And, you know, I think that's, that's part of the problem is that I think people are getting, you know, clued in to being downtown and wearing it, but away from downtown, they think they're, it's, it's just okay to do whatever you want. And somehow we have to continue to get the message out from us and on social media and any other way we can get the word out that we're not doing very well. And, you know, wearing a mask protects, you know, you and others. And I guess if there's a way, we can look for innovative ways to get the message out, I would suggest we continue to do that. Thank you.
Councilmember Monroe?
Yeah, so I had a question, just any, any update on how particularly vulnerable populations, including our homeless population, is doing? Number one, and number two, it sounds like we're in the middle of discussion. Is this, are we supposed to do public comment first? Otherwise, I have a suggestion for, it came my way from someone, I mean, about how to get the word out.
Yes, we will have public comment. This is basically questions.
Okay, so a question about, I'll save then the second piece, so then the vulnerable population piece, especially homeless, do we? How do things go? Yeah.
We have asked the county, the Alameda County City Managers Association, as a group, asked the County of Alameda Health Department, could they release finer-grained information, especially related to particular populations, whether that be race-based, age, sex, by city, so that we could begin to get more information as well as any other items, because of course, the thing that we're looking for is, as your staff, is to figure out, are there patterns in this? Are there things that we could be doing with certain groups that might help the overall health of the community? Previously, the county had not released that information, but last week, they did announce that they would be willing to release, release the base data files that would allow us to get more nuanced information. So we expect, I believe it's later this week, that we will send staff to training, it may be actually be early the following week. And then we will be able to get the more nuanced information. So I, I do believe they, they track homeless. Strangely enough, I don't believe they tie, don't know whether they tie homeless people to a particular city. But in, in response to your very specific question, but we will get essentially more nuanced information than we're currently getting, which is generally limited to, to cases by zip code.
Okay, Vice Mayor Warner?
Thank you again, Mark, for the good report. I see the progress downtown. I agree with Councilmember Carling that we may need to get the statistics more broadly in terms of mask usage in town. And then I was also going to pursue this question of the more detailed statistics that, you know, we had talked about. And you mentioned something about training. When do you think we get the first analysis of the more detailed data so that we could begin to see if there were any trends or whatever that we might act to try and mitigate?
I believe that we would have that information in the next ten days.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, at that point, I'm going to open up the public comment period for six point oh one. And with that, Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments either on Zoom or YouTube?
Thank you, Mayor Marshawn. We have received no public comments over YouTube. We do have public comments over Zoom. City Clerk's office, please read the comments received.
The comments that we've received are actually related to items that were in your supplemental packet that you received earlier today. And as our policy, we will read the most recent comment that came in, and it's from Jesus Sarosco. "Without indoor dining, restaurants simply must use third-party delivery companies. We do not have the luxury of simply canceling their services at this time." We also have a comment from Julie O'Brien. "I applaud the city for its presentation of timely COVID data on its website, but this is not enough. We need to understand more than just the total number of cases. We need to see where we are headed with data such as case rate trends, positive test rates, and simple projections, and how Livermore compares with the surrounding communities. The public, excuse me, the public needs the latest information, and we need it to be highly visible wherever we go around town. We need to be reminded at every point where we could potentially be exposed to infection. I encourage the City Council to use every available tool to help increase our awareness of this threat. The most up-to-date information needs to be posted where it will be, where it will do the most good. Posted on city Facebook posts and press releases around major retail sites, including downtown retail quarter. It needs to be highly visible driving around town, on school electronic signs, at entrances to the city on major roads, in the city center, and on the Fourth Street banner." And that concludes the comments on Zoom.
Okay, I'm going to close the public comment period. This is something that came up when there was, they wanted the city-specific data on, on COVID-19, and we provided that. We've got information on Facebook, on Nextdoor, on Nixle, we've got Instagram, we've got signs all over the downtown. We've got press releases, we have videos. So COVID is out there, and as I said, you go downtown, there are signs all over downtown. You know, wear your face masks. We don't have the actual numbers of how, you know, what the number is, because that does change. And we're trying to get some of the more nuanced information, but the message is, wear your masks, maintain social distancing, limit unnecessary travel, shelter in place. That's the message that we're trying to get across, and the numbers really aren't that important. What's important is that you need to wear your mask. It wasn't that long ago that our numbers in Livermore were the lowest in the Tri-Valley. We had a few incidents where there were organizations that put on services. There was a church in Springtown that opened up. Picture the newspaper showed them without masks, without social distancing. It was ten days after that that our numbers started to climb, and I think then we started to get community transmission. With the additional data, the more nuanced data that the City Manager has talked about, we may be able to pinpoint that. But let's just understand that people need to wear their masks, they need to be socially distanced, and don't, just avoid unnecessary travel, avoid unnecessary contact. It's going to be even more difficult once school starts, although the, we're going to start with distance education. I think that's going to be important to, to work together on that. But bottom line of it, when you go out, wear your mask and be social, you maintain social distancing. So we can't be more clear than that. It's just, it's very difficult to get people to, to protect people from themselves, and that's what we're really trying to do here. Wow, everybody's up here. Vice Mayor Warner?
Yeah, I wanted to pick up on a couple of items. One, I think everything we can do to encourage use of masks is what we have to do. That's the only, only tool we have to help, help us here and, you know, stay safe. The other thing I wanted to say is I'm also in favor of limiting the delivery fees for the restaurants. You know, having interacted with a lot of the restaurants, they're barely hanging on. And right now, I think the fees that they're having to pay are like up to thirty percent, and that seems extremely high. And so I'm in favor of asking Mark, within his powers, to drop that to cap it at fifteen.
Thank you. Councilmember Monroe? Followed by Councilmember Carling.
Right, so first of all, I agree completely about the, I will call it price gouging. Fifteen percent sounds reasonable to me. Sure, let's cap it at that. I also know that there was a request for help, you know, with winter coming, help with sustaining the businesses through that, the restaurants through that. And I'd like to see us consider that in one way or another. I know that wasn't brought up, but that did come through in the I know that wasn't brought up, um, but that did come through in the, um, in the, uh, letters that were sent to us. Um, and then I did, I wanted to go back to this, you know, we have signs everywhere. Well, clearly we don't, because people, I mean, we, we haven't, clearly people aren't listening, and that means we haven't done enough, uh, in one way or another.
That's two different things, actually. You can have the signs, people won't read them.
Let me finish. Uh, so, the thing I really like about, um, Ms. O'Brien, Ms. O'Brien's, um, comments is the idea that the numbers do matter, posting them matters. I mean, when I go in, you know, it's very easy to say, wear your mask, and it's like, well, why should I? What difference does it really make? But when you see that this day it goes up, you know, it's 401, and the next day is 415, and the next day is 400 and whatever, I mean, I watch those numbers obsessively and they make me nuts. So don't ask me why I'm doing it, because, well, yes. Um, I think that that actually makes a difference. I think showing people sort of rubbing their noses in the fact that this matters does matter. Um, I understand that's a burden on the city, um, I, and I don't know how to implement, you know, how to make that, where to put that where it's going to be most effective, but I do think that would make a huge difference, actually. Because I think it makes the connection between you are wearing your mask because this is happening here. Um, so, um, yeah, sorry.
So what you're suggesting is that we change the signs in the downtown every single day to, to reflect the new numbers? Because those numbers are posted on our website. We have signs downtown, every, all over downtown, saying that the, the numbers are, are going up. Those numbers are posted on our website.
I do think that working, for example, with the school district and asking them to use their, you know, where are these change, these, uh, you know, the boards that change every day? I think we could use some of those. And yes, I am aware, I've seen the signs downtown. I, I understand that we have, wear your mask. I was just down there this morning, trying to go to Trader Joe's. Um, and I, I saw those. But they say, wear your mask. There's not a clear connection between wear your mask because today our numbers are here. Or you don't have to change them every day, you change them every week. But, you know, the other thing I can imagine is, people like competitions, we're losing this one right now. Perhaps the thing to do is to say, how do we, how, we're number five right now, maybe we want to be number 15. Yeah, and so on. Um, that, that might be another, uh, uh, an additional approach. But going to the, you know, going to the website means you actually have to act to go to the website. If it's in your face, it's in your face.
Okay, so one of the, so, i- in my business, we actually sent things out to people. We put notices in people's hands, and they refused to read them. And then that was our fault, because they didn't read them. We were in their face. We put it in their hands, they did not read it. So it's posted on Nextdoor every single day. It's posted to the website every single day. But you know what? If people choose to not read the signs, we cannot force them. Yeah, I like your idea about a competition. I don't know how we do that, but it comes down to personal responsibility. And, and that's, and, and looking after other people. And I think that's the compelling issue here, is we're trying to get people, not to think of themselves, but to think of other people. And, yeah, you talk about, you know, getting into somebody's face. If they ignore you, it's not going to do any good. So we've been getting the information out. You had, you had, uh, a news, a letter out, Councilmember Carling, we all did, we all put out letters, we all put out videos. We're getting the information out, but if people choose to ignore it, it's, it's a very difficult lift. And, and that's, it is, it's frustrating. There was another point that came up, uh, Councilmember Monroe alluded to it, but it was a little more specific, uh, in the letter that we got, that the, uh, they were looking, some of the downtown restaurants were looking for assistance in acquiring, uh, tents and heaters and, and lighting, uh, as we were getting later in the season. So, yeah, I guess there are other rental companies that are not doing the business that they had, because there aren't the events. So what they were looking for was some connectivity between, uh, the rental companies that weren't having the events, and perhaps, uh, supplying some of the items that they would need to expand their business during, uh, the fall and winter season. As I said, acquiring tents, lighting and heating. So I'm not sure how much we can rely on the, or how much we depend on the Office of Innovation and Economic Development, uh, what sort of grants might be available, what sort of programs might be available, but that was one of the things that came up during public comment. Okay, uh, there we go. Since, for the city manager to take under advisement.
All right, um, so, uh, absolutely. I know Livermore Downtown Incorporated is, uh, working with rental companies there to come up with things. We have reached out to Alameda County Health, um, and, uh, they are in the process of developing regulations for, uh, outdoor coverings. Obviously, a fully enclosed tent, um, you know, it would, uh, not be legal under the order, um, but, you know, we started to ask very detailed questions about, you know, how about a windbreak? How about something, windbreak and a cover? And, uh, they assured us, uh, that they appreciated us, uh, asking questions they didn't know the answers to. Um, and so we'll be coming up with guidelines on that, so we'll be keeping track of that as well, um, and, uh, working with LDI and working with our downtown merchants, um, because, yes, uh, I think it is wise for us to consider what's going to happen in the fall and winter season, um, throughout the community where, uh, commercial activities are allowed, um, especially if we start to add other classes of commercial activity or service activity. There may be sort of widespread, uh, requests for, uh, help in, uh, surviving outdoors, um, for things that would normally be happening indoors during the fall and winter. So, uh, I, I think we have a couple of other comments from council members there, uh, showing up, but I have a, I have a list so far that would, uh, you'd like us to explore essentially limiting fees for delivery services, um, uh, taking a look at seeing whether the banner over Fourth Street is available, look for innovative ways to get the, uh, message out, um, the items we just talked about, uh, for helping outdoor businesses, uh, and essentially, uh, doing at least some exploration of how do we make the numbers and, uh, the face mask messaging, um, tie those together and make them more visible in the community. And so we'll maybe do some exploration around what is possible. There's, uh, as you noted in your discussion, um, some limitations on our ability to, uh, to do things on an hourly or daily basis, but I think certainly on a periodic basis in some key areas, we can absolutely tie those things together, um, and get that information out.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Yeah, a couple of things to follow up, and, and just, uh, you mentioned the banner over Fourth Street, but there's also the one over, um, Livermore Avenue. So you can see that, and with respect to the, um, helping with the outdoor dining in the winter, I didn't know if it was appropriate on this item or when you, 6.04, or whatever it is. So we can handle it here, and I think there are two pieces to this. One is, what's the technical thing that they would need? But the other one is, a- all of the permitting that would be, um, necessary, the application process, and then the, uh, thought if there would be economic help, right? So it, I think I would suggest that you kind of dual-track this. We'll figure out what the thing is, but simultaneously, we should figure out the process, because I'm pretty sure it will be some thing that works, that has the requisite, uh, feel of outdoor dining, but doesn't put you in a windstorm or rainstorm, uh, next to that, where, you know, where the wind is blowing it. So I would like to suggest you, uh, parse this into the two things. One's the, all of the administrative and financial, uh, assistance, applications, et cetera, and then let the county weigh in on what the allowed structures are. And then I, I also agree that if, you know, in general, uh, getting the word out, and I like the idea of the, uh, of the competition being competitive type myself, and I'm looking at those numbers that we publish on our website and saying, ah, we're, we're losing. So I'm really looking forward to understanding why. And I think, uh, what we have at the moment is a lot of, um, urban legend speculations, oh, it must be this, it must be that. And when people don't have the data, they make up stories to fit whatever narrative they want. I think we absolutely have to have the data, and then with it, we can begin to address those, the reasons why we're having the, uh, increase in numbers.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Carling.
Thank you. I just wanted to say I support the cap on the, the deliveries, um, from those delivery services, as others have mentioned. And, Mark, you may have already thought of this, but I think, uh, Councilmember Monroe alluded to it, but each of the schools in town have a display that sits outside of their, of their building, and I go by Sunset quite often. I've never seen on that display anything about masks. And so if you could reach out to the school district and see if, uh, at least somebody could reprogram their, uh, signboards outside each of the schools to, I mean, I think many of their messages are fine, but maybe having one on there about masks would also be very important, just another way of reaching out to people that, um, are driving around or walking around town, seeing it again in another spot, and that being at a school.
Okay. Any, any other comments? Okay, uh, we had the public hearing, uh, this is an information item, so there being no further comments, let's go on to 6.02. This is the resolution of continued local emergency.
Honorable Mayor, it's your Emergency Services Director, Mark Roberts. Again, um, under the government code, uh, you are required to, uh, consider adoption of a resolution of, uh, continuing the local emergency every 60 days. So it is that time again. Your staff recommends that based on essentially the current environment at the nation, state and county level, and, uh, where Livermore fits into that, uh, and our current pattern, uh, we are recommending that you, uh, ratify and adopt the resolution of continued local emergency. This continued resolution will be good for another 60 days, at which time, uh, if, uh, the, the emergency has concluded, we would bring back a resolution to conclude the emergency, um, or simply you would not need to renew that, uh, resolution. Or if the, uh, emergency continues at that point, we will return for continued ratification. Um, available for any questions.
Okay, any questions? All right, see none? I'm going to open the public comment period. Do you have any public comments? And Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Marshawn. No comments have been received.
Okay, uh, none from YouTube or Zoom. All right, very good. I'm going to close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. Uh, any questions or comments, or do I have a motion to adopt the resolution? Uh, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Monroe, raise your hand.
Um, so I would, I would move to adopt the resolution with, with the one slightly snarky comment, which is, if we don't adopt it, does that make the emergency go away? So you may let that pass. I just moved to adopt the resolution.
Snark is noted.
Okay.
Uh, second by Vice Mayor Warner. Okay, uh, any discussion on the motion? Uh, sure be glad we don't need to do these anymore. Uh, okay, uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn.
Hi, thank you. Uh, moving on to 6.03, this is the, uh, ratification of the emergency order.
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor. It's your Director of Emergency Services, Mark Roberts. This, uh, particular order for ratification, um, extends, uh, the order dealing with temporary moratoriums on residential and commercial evictions, um, resulting from the loss of income, increased medical expenses or childcare needs related to COVID-19. From its current terminus to, uh, September 30th, this will match the statewide order, um, that is currently in effect that Governor, uh, Newsome, uh, placed in order. So this essentially is, uh, exactly the order that we had previously adopted, um, and I took action to extend, uh, that to September 30th, and this resolution ratifies that extension of the temporary moratorium until September 30th to match the state.
All right, thank you. Uh, any questions? See no questions? I'm going to open the public comment period. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments for 6.03?
No comments have been received.
Okay, very good, thank you. I'm going to close the public comment period, uh, and bring it back to the council. Is there, uh, is there any discussion, or do I have a motion?
So move.
Uh, move by Councilmember Monroe.
Second. Coomer.
To toss up, okay. Councilmember Coomer on the second. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner. Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. Thank you. Uh, on to 6.04, this is the ratification of the emergency order, uh, establishing a temporary outdoor dining permit program.
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor. It's Mark Roberts, your Emergency Services Director. This emergency order, uh, was based on direction from the council at a previous council meeting. Uh, the council at that time, uh, directed staff to take all necessary steps to, uh, prepare for and implement, um, outdoor retail and outdoor dining within the area of the downtown, to allow, uh, outdoor dining and other outdoor activities as permitted by the county throughout the community. This, uh, required the rewriting of, um, ordinances and, uh, resolutions from throughout the city. They mainly, uh, center around required parking. So in most areas outside the downtown, um, areas on private property were permitted to be converted from required parking spaces into outdoor dining or outdoor retail areas. The process for a permit was created, um, the permit was widely distributed, um, and essentially staff worked with individual business owners to facilitate those conversions. It also permits activities for other types of businesses, um, such as outdoor exercise studios and similar, uh, items, which now can also be permitted, uh, on private property. The order then in the downtown area allows a use of public right-of-way, um, that was previously required for parking, um, in your downtown specific plan. Your downtown specific limits the amount of outdoor parking and the number of parking spaces that are permitted to be used for retail or dining activity. My order changed those regulations to essentially facilitate, um, as much outdoor dining area as was requested by adjacent property owners, uh, and business owners. All of those changes were, uh, ultimately accomplished, uh, in the order, and, uh, this resolution essentially ratifies that emergency, uh, order. That order also established some baseline, uh, information and requirements as to, uh, when, uh, businesses can be open, um, also placed a certain limitations on businesses, um, that are consistent with the county order to make sure that we're maintaining public health and safety, uh, as we move forward. In addition, the order also permitted and codified, uh, the expectations for street closures and noted that, um, street closures and things related to traffic in the public right-of-way will be reviewed by, uh, the city engineer, um, and that she will ultimately be responsible for ensuring that those are done in a safe and effective manner to preserve essentially, um, the safety in the downtown when we are changing street configurations. Those are the major, uh, pieces of that particular order, uh, and what's before you is a resolution, uh, authorizing ratification of that emergency order. And with that, uh, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Uh, any questions, uh, for Emergency Services Director? Okay, see no question? Oh, uh, Vice Mayor Warner, good question.
Questions, and we, we able to address the question associated with, uh, outdoor music associated with this, and I can wait until after a public comment on that. And the other thing is, um, with respect to using Stockman's Park, I understand we have applications, uh, we're taking applications now for, um, for people to, um, uh, use the, basically the corners, and I guess there are five spots in Stockman's Park that could get the decomposed granite. So if you could just say a little bit about, um, that, what the process is on the applications, when that will, period will close, and what we're going to do, that would also be helpful.
Vice Mayor Warner, thank you, yes. Um, your, uh, staff is, uh, coordinating the completions of Stockman's Park. If you've peeked through the fence there, you know that we are getting close. Turf is down in the main park area, trees are in place, um, the statue of Buddy, um, our, uh, young, uh, man who is getting ready to go off to war, uh, is going to arrive this week and be installed. So we are getting very close on that front. As you know, As you know, Stockman's Park is designed to be surrounded by commercial and cultural uses. And each of those uses now is on a slightly different timeline due to the emergency. So staff at council's direction has considered the interim uses that could be utilized for essentially the pads that are around the edge of Stockman's Park. The point of that would be to activate the park to provide eyes there and to allow people a space for outdoor dining as they are adjacent to that park area. You are correct, we opened the application period essentially last week on Friday and businesses in the vicinity have been notified. There are a application process and if folks have any questions with that application process, it is available on our website. Please give staff a call during business hours. We stand ready to help out folks filling out that application. The deadline for that is this coming Friday, so there are four more business days to get that application in. Again, if you've got any questions, please let us know and at least turn in your application form, even if we need to get additional information. What we will do is ultimately make sure that we have some basics out there that are safe and level and hard surface. So we will be putting the same material that we used at Flagfall Plaza in each of the dirt areas that would ultimately have a commercial building or a a use surrounding the park area there. And so we hope that we ultimately are able to get up to five different entities or cooperations between entities to utilize those sites. Ultimately, to utilize that site, you will have to, of course, staff and take care of the commercial area that's created within those areas, but we'll ultimately work with the individual businesses to come up with a plan for that. And I'm certainly available if you've got further questions.
Yeah, the other thing that strikes me is that those areas are also going to be asked to put some of the structures up for the winter. So just want to make sure you're considering that as well.
Very good.
Okay, very good. So I see no further questions. So with that, I'm going to open up the public comment period for six point oh four, the emergency order. Madam City Clerk, do you have any public comment?
We do. City Clerk's office, please read the comments received over Zoom.
This comment is from Michelle Rodriguez. It says, comment about live music. The Livermore restaurants are experiencing significant decreases in sales due to the changes required by the county order. We rely on live music to attract people to our restaurants. It does not encourage congregating, but rather entertains our patrons who are seated in our outdoor dining area with proper distancing. Live music also offers support of our local musicians who are suffering as well through this time. We would request the council allow live music to continue. And that's the comment on Zoom.
Okay, very good. Oh, another one came in. Okay.
Yes. And this again is something that you've received in your supplemental earlier today from Jesus Orozco. Live music must be allowed with safety provisions, of course. We can't go to the movies, plays, concerts, bars or clubs. As humans, we need a social outlet. I think we can't be safe and have some fun as well. Let's figure out how to live with this emergency instead of shutting music down. And that concludes this the Zoom comments.
Great, thank you. And we did receive Mr. Orozco's comments prior to the meeting as well as Gianna Shell. So we did have those those comments in addition to Mr. Orozco and Michelle Rodriguez.
Honorable Mayor.
Yes, I'm going to close the public comment period and then bring it back to the city council and staff, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, so I do want to be clear, we are talking about two related things here. The order before you is a ratification of an order that actually allows music for outdoor dining. So in the item before you, mu- music is permitted. The the comments essentially are correct is that we have noted that in many cases outdoor music has not been well managed and has led to the singers and performers being too close to the tables, people congregating in areas with the band or live music. And that as the evening goes on, essentially activity that is not consistent with face masks or the social distancing has occurred. Obviously, one solution to that is to limit or eliminate live music as a part of that. We did receive in your packet this evening a number of comments from the restaurateurs noting that they were very willing to make whatever operational changes are necessary so that live music could be done safely. And I think at this point, while that issue is not in this particular order, we would certainly welcome and encourage that activity. And with that, I think your staff would work with the restaurants and others in downtown so that we could put those protocols in place because the the music itself is not a health risk. It's essentially the activities that surround that. And if we can make sure that everyone continues to wear their mask the entire time they're in the area, everyone continues to socially distance, not only at the beginning of the evening, but all the way until closing time, then further limitations on on live music may not be necessary. So we would request that you direct your staff to work with the restaurateurs to ensure that we're meeting all of the requirements. And if we're able to do that and observe the behavior is consistent with that, that may ultimately solve that issue.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Councilmember Monroe followed by Vice Mayor Warner.
Try to unmute. Right, so this goes back to the question about how do we keep. So first of all, sure, yes, let's keep music. Music is a good thing. Music safely is a good thing. This goes back to the how do we communicate and get compliance from people around masks? And it is largely and correctly on the business owners, but it is also on the customers who take off their masks and ask appropriately and behave inappropriately. So the question is, can we help with messaging there? You know, to to the effect of wear your mask so this music can continue. Here's the carrot. There's the stick. Is it possible for us to help help in that way?
Certainly, if there is information, and we will certainly work with our restaurateurs and others that if there is messaging that we can put out that would help them gain compliance from their customers, we would be very interested in facilitating that.
Well, there are signs in front of the businesses say that they are actually required to refuse service to someone who is not wearing a mask. The problem is, as people are sitting at a table drinking, then they feel that they no longer have to wear the mask. So that's that's part of the messaging. It's incumbent upon the the business owner to remind them and say, excuse me, you need to be wearing your mask, but then you get into this gray area about you put your mask on between sips of your beer. So again, it's trying to get people to be socially responsible and personally responsible. So it's tricky. Vice Mayor Warner.
So I I'm in favor of staff working with the restaurants to figure out a way to do this safely. My interactions with the owners are they're very concerned about safety and want to do it well. They also know that they need to do it well in order to survive. So I think the desire to do it is there. And I do think they want help from staff. And as Councilmember Monroe pointed out, ultimately, they're going to need help from the public that patronizes them. So I think everybody wants to do this. And I think we should come up with the best ideas we have and then adjust as we go along. But I think it's critical element to helping the restaurant survive as long as we can do it safely. And I think they are committed to it and would be very worthwhile for staff to work with them.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I move that staff work with the restaurants to figure out how to do the outdoor, continue doing outdoor music safely.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Warner, seconded by Councilmember Monroe.
Honorable Mayor.
Yes.
Your Director of Emergency Services. And we ultimately will need a motion on the resolution ratifying the emergency order for temporary outdoor dining as well.
Okay, I move that as well.
Very good.
And Councilmember Monroe, second.
Sure, but can we do two at once?
City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item before you this evening is the ratification of the Director of Emergency Services order that he's already issued. That's a motion that you have before you. I think you've given him sufficient direction on how to modify that order and to continue his work downtown. So I'm not sure that you need to take an action on that particular item. I think he has that direction. But the item before you is to approve his existing emergency order establishing the dining permit program.
Okay, I'll I'll make a motion to approve the existing order. And and that you've also taken into advisement the discussion earlier on working with them to get outdoor music done safely.
The additional council direction.
Right.
Okay.
That'll second.
Very good. Any further discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
That's my member Monroe.
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. Moving on to six point oh five, this is the next gen software agreement. Public outreach.
Honorable Mayor, Mark Roberts, your City Manager, and I want to introduce Debbie Bell. We'll be giving our presentation on the asset management programs, public outreach campaign and our next gen utility management system.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Marshawn and City Council members. This is Debbie Bell and I'm a management analyst in the Public Works Department. Tonight, I will provide an update on the asset management program, including a few recent activities, an overview of the public outreach process, and will request your approval for a technology contract to improve the functionality of this program. As you know, asset management is one of the five city goals. Over the last few years, we learned that we have approximately two and a half billion dollars in general fund assets. To fully maintain all of these assets, we need approximately forty million dollars per year. And for the highest priority assets, we need twenty million per year. Unfortunately, our city's annual budget is insufficiently insufficient to properly maintain and replace all of these assets. But because of this program, you've been able to make data-driven and risk-based decisions on how to direct limited funding to the most critical systems. Since my most recent asset management program update to you in November twenty nineteen, we've we've continued to integrate asset management into all of our projects. We've made progress on the Home Street Wall project, stormwater maintenance activities and budgeting decisions for capital improvement projects. We've hired an asset management specialist who, through detailed data analysis, is identifying program and project efficiencies. And we've begun an extensive public outreach effort. As the real owners of the city's assets, the community needs to be informed about the extent, value and condition of our assets and be able to voice their priorities and concerns. Our community will benefit from understanding the challenges that exist due to our aging infrastructure, rising costs and constraints on available funding. In November twenty nineteen, you approved a contract with MIG to help staff implement a public outreach campaign. Over the next year, this campaign will utilize a variety of strategies to build awareness and increase interest in the topic of asset management and to gather community feedback. We originally scheduled many of the outreach campaign deliverables to be released in May to coincide with so many of our community events in Livermore. However, due to COVID, we're moving our outreach efforts online until in-person outreach is possible again. Right now, we're developing a variety of digital tools, including a website, informational videos, interactive online games and quizzes, surveys, newsletter articles and social media posts. A revised outreach schedule is provided as attachment one on page two ninety-three of your agenda packet. Our first major deliverable from this schedule is currently available. We released the first of a two-part online survey on June eighteenth. The survey is available on the city's website and the project website at www dot livermoreassets dot net. The goal of the survey is to gauge the general level of satisfaction about the quality and maintenance of our assets to solicit feedback on use and maintenance priorities and gauge opinions on various policy and funding options. Hopefully, you've all seen and taken the survey, and I'm really pleased to say that we've received nearly one thousand responses so far. This feedback will then be used to guide the development of the upcoming public outreach tools. The survey closes this Friday, July thirty-first. Late next month, we will present the initial findings of the survey to the Community Asset Management Program Outreach Committee, which is also known as CAMP, for their feedback. And then we're going to use their input to further further analyze the survey results and we will provide the findings to you and the community. The public outreach program I just described is being overseen by the CAMP Outreach Committee. These nine volunteer committee members were sworn in by you in January and are acting as a focus group and project ambassadors. The committee held two meetings in February. During those meetings, they provided input on the outreach program's strategy and goals, barriers and motivators, core messages, metrics of success, potential stakeholders, outreach methods and the schedule. Due to COVID, the committee was unable to meet in person over the last few months, but they've continued to stay engaged and provide programmatic input and feedback. We are holding our first virtual Zoom Camp Outreach Committee meeting on August twenty-sixth. And during that meeting, as I mentioned before, we're going to focus on the survey results and next steps for the public outreach tools. In addition to the public outreach effort, staff is also working behind the scenes to improve our data information system so that we can more fully leverage the investment that we've made so far in this asset management program. Staff is proposing to enter into a contract with Next Gen Utility for asset and maintenance management software. This software will replace Acela, which is our existing software system, which is unnecessarily complicated and lacks the forecasting elements that are critical to proper asset management efforts. The Water Resources Division made this same transition in twenty sixteen from Acela to Next Gen with great success. Next Gen allows for GIS connectivity and spatial analysis and combines asset management, inventory management and capital and maintenance funding forecasting into a single application. The system is fully web-based and cloud-hosted. Rather than having two separate contracts with Next Gen, staff is proposing to migrate both the Maintenance and Water Resources Divisions into one enterprise agreement. By working together and entering into a ten-year agreement, we've been able to negotiate a reduced annual rate, unlimited user licenses and the option to add other divisions or departments' assets without incurring additional future annual costs. This agreement will provide a consistent platform and better allow for cross-departmental data integration. The contract includes two components. The first component is to migrate the Maintenance Division's assets into the software system. This requires three hundred and forty thousand dollars and will take approximately six to eight months. This funding is allocated already in the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget that you recently approved. The second component is for the annual software licensing, maintenance and support elements. Because the proposed agreement will replace the Water Resources Division's existing agreement with Next Gen and replace the Maintenance Division's existing agreement with Acela, the fee of a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars per year does not create a new financial burden for the city. This is money that we are already spending on those previous contracts, which we will now terminate upon this agreement. With all of this in mind, staff is requesting council approve the attached resolution and execute the enterprise agreement with Next Gen. In conclusion, your investment so far in the asset management program has already paid dividends in more efficient and cost-effective work accomplished throughout the city. We know that there will be challenges and tough decisions ahead. But now through our public outreach program and proper technology, those decisions will be informed by better data, improved methodologies and through community input. I want to thank you for your interest and dedication to this program. And with that, staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bill. Any questions from council at this point? Councilmember Monroe.
So two questions. Is there, what kind of engagement with the schools is there or is there any at this point? Just in terms of not their assets, but the getting kids involved. And that's just one question. And then the second one is. not their assets, but the getting kids involved. And that's just one question. And then the second one is, again, thinking about inclusion, Spanish speakers, can they fill out the survey? How how can? What kind of outreach is is being done to that community and and other languages as well? But I just know that that's the largest uh, community where language is likely to be a challenge.
Excellent questions. So we do have a component of our outreach program to to reach out to the schools and in multiple ways. We plan to develop some curriculum. We had planned to develop curriculum for in-classroom discussions and such. But we are now starting to work to figure out how that will change since school is going online now. But but that is one element. We've also very specifically reached out to the Youth Advisory Commission to have them weigh in on this project specifically on the survey, and will continue to do so throughout the extent of the public outreach. As far as inclusion, we did, we do have this survey available in Spanish, and it's online. We have advertised that through various social media platforms specifically to the Spanish-speaking community.
Great, thank you.
Okay, seeing no further questions. Uh, we're going to open the public comment period. Do we have any public comments? And I'm City Clerk.
Mayor Marshawn, no comments have been received.
Okay, in that case, I'm going to close the public comment period. A comments by the council, I we received the update, and I'll need a motion to adopt the resolution. Customer Monroe.
Um, so comment, just that this is always I I've said this before, I'm going to say it again. My first introduction to assets, our asset management was key to the city. I lived here for thirty years before I took key to the city and didn't really think about it. I love asset man, infrastructure, things that make the city work. They're great. And I also said this before, and I'll say it again. I've been watching our attendance numbers go down, and apparently that's not what everybody else gets excited about. So I'm really excited that we're doing the outreach. I'm really excited that this is happening and I'm, this is just something I wholeheartedly behind. So I'm also move.
Well, when you've got six hundred miles of sidewalks and three hundred miles of roads, almost, you know, three billion dollars in assets, and we've got to figure out a way to to pay for it. And they said that we've got to maintain that as a third of our annual general fund. And uh, over half, fifty-seven percent of our budget goes to public safety. So it's it's daunting. So this is something that's it's extremely important.
I was very impressed with Key to the City. So I'm just gonna one one final quick comment that we had this audit process and the camp process had been put into place. And I believe, Mayor, you've said that it was Vice Mayor Warner that that proposed it.
Right. The Vice Mayor Warner was the one that came up with the the need for an asset management plan. This is something that we did in the in the water industry is where you needed a renewal replacement allowance. But it was Vice Mayor Warner that that really brought this forward. Vice Mayor Warner, you have your hand up.
Well, thank you for the shout out, and it's something that I'm very passionate about, you know, having worked professionally in and asset management type activities. And it's, this is a key to us remaining financially sound. And we're going to have to make a tough decision. So I'm glad to see we have this outreach program going because the community is the community's assets, and they need to weigh in on what we do here, but we can't do everything. But I'm glad to see this, you know, software coming in and the outreach. And so I heartily second the motion.
Okay, it's moved by Councilman Monroe, seconded by Vice Mayor Warner. Any further discussion of the motion? Roll call, please.
That's Member Monroe.
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. Thank you very much. Um, just just kind of calibrate here. It's nine twenty. Normally, we would have taken a five-minute break a little bit back. You guys want to just keep forging ahead? I'm seeing sort of, no, it's okay. Very good. Well, we'll just keep going. This is uh, moving on to six point oh seven. This is beekeeping.
Honorable Mayor, six point oh six is still waiting to be.
I'm sorry, I just, I wait a minute here. I didn't, uh, let's see. Response times. Warranty of services. It's funny, I was looking at that, and I thought, yeah, maybe I did miss that one. Hang on a second. Let me get back to. Oh, that's right, six point oh six. That is the uh.
It's your Livermore Downtown Annual Report.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, your city manager, Mark Roberts. So this item is the annual report that you require from Livermore Downtown Incorporated. That annual report covers the timeframe twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, and is the authorization of the execution of grant agreement with Livermore Downtown Incorporated for Services provided to the city in the amount of ninety thousand dollars. With that introduction, I'm going to introduce our Director of Innovation and Economic Development, Adam Vandewater, who's going to give us a report related to this item.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members, Adam Vandewater, your Director of Innovation and Economic Development. Before you today, as the city manager mentioned, is a resolution accepting the current year's annual report as well as a agreement, a grant agreement with Livermore Downtown Inc. for the coming year. As in years past, Livermore Downtown Inc. has been a tremendous partner to the city as a five oh one C three nonprofit since nineteen eighty-six, certified National Main Street Program, and recipient of the two thousand and nine Great American Main Street Award. There are primary contact with our downtown restaurants, retailers, and professional service providers. As in previous years, we're proposing today a ninety thousand dollar annual grant. But those deliverables have been updated to reflect our COVID nineteen reality in a number of significant ways. For one, we've had to postpone or defer most of our large gatherings from the Downtown Streets Fest, Fourth of July, and other gatherings no longer permitted under the County Public Health Order. But we've been working with LDI to find new virtual or deferred means of of creating community. And they've been hard at work for the last several months, working to support the downtown businesses in a number of key ways, many of which have been discussed this evening in some capacity or another. And that includes the issuance of our outdoor dining flex zone permits, our weekend street closures on First Street, facilitation of roadside pickup, delivery, and conversion to grocery pickup, the creation of our six feet apart but together at the heart masks and T-shirts downtown, distribution of National Main Street best practices for the distribution of personal protective equipment, social distancing measures, maintaining staffing, facilitation of payroll protection program, and economic injury disaster loans from the federal government, distribution through social media and the Livermore Downtown Inc.'s twenty-one thousand estimated Facebook followers, working with Zoom working groups and through delivery fee caps that we discussed earlier tonight, and otherwise working to ensure the long-term economic health of our downtown. We've also discussed and included within the resolution before you this evening some new initiatives that we've been discussing from previous to COVID times, and that includes a Livermore Valley-made online Shopify platform where we'll put products made in and by local residents in the community in a central area where that can be purchased online and promoted as such. And then as well as strengthening our alliances and partnerships with the California Restaurant Association, Alcohol Beverage Control, the Livermore Valley Tourism Partnership, and other partners from our wine growers to our visit Tri Valley neighbors. And so Rochelle Snitcore, the Executive Director of Livermore Downtown Inc., is in the meeting with us today. And both of us are available for any questions you might have about this grant agreement and resolution before you tonight.
Okay, any questions for Rochelle or for Adam? By the way, I have my six feet apart, connected at the heart. You can get those to the farmer's market? Oh, yeah, this is unfortunately, because of COVID nineteen, we've missed the downtown festival, the Wine Country Festival, and the fireworks and Livermore Downtown Inc. just has a phenomenal job. And of course, bringing us back the national recognition for our Great American Main Street. Just really a wonderful job that they're doing, connecting their businesses and connecting the community. And I look forward to the days when we can come back together. But the the quick pivot that LDI did with the farmer's market, taking something that was quite controversial and really heart-wrenching, and then pivoting and creating just a wonderful opportunity in the downtown to bring our community together. So great work, and thank you very much for for the great work that Ms. Snitcore does. So that, any questions for staff at this point? All right, I'm going to open the public comment period for six point oh six, the Livermore Downtown Annual Report and the grant agreement. Any any comments? Another city clerk?
No comments have been received.
Okay, well, very good. I'm going to bring it back to the council. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to accept the staff recommendation.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Carling, seconded by Vice Mayor Werner. Any discussion of the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi, and yay, LDI.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. Thank you. Yeah, unfortunately, the the bookmark had dropped below the the screen. Had scrolled up far enough. So it actually dropped below all my other bookmarks. Okay, six point oh six, and now six point oh seven. This is beekeeping. Thank you for keeping me honest, Mr. City Manager.
Honorable Mayor, Mark Roberts, your city manager. Item six point oh seven is a matter that was initiated by the city council, requesting that we examine our rules and regulations relating to the keeping of bees within the city boundaries. And this evening, we have Planning Manager Steve Stewart here to give the presentation of the items that we found and make a recommendation to you for updating our standards. And Steve, I think you're muted. We are not hearing you at the moment.
Does that sound better?
There we go.
Hey, sorry about that. Got too many buttons to push here. So thanks, Mark. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As Mr. Roberts already mentioned, staff is returning to the council this evening in response to your direction for staff to evaluate Livermore's and other nearby jurisdictions' beekeeping regulations, in particular for single-family residential properties. And I think we're all, you know, somewhat aware of the honeybees and their importance to the natural world and to the and to cultivated agriculture in their role as pollinators. And just interesting related to Livermore, vineyards don't particularly rely on direct bee pollinization, but they bee pollinization is important for the cover crops among the vineyards and also the plants planted sort of around the blocks of vineyards that attract the predators that prey on insects that are harmful to vineyards. So and then, of course, honey is another product resulting from local beekeeping. So certainly, there are also cons when considering beekeeping in residential areas, including bee stings and the more serious allergic reactions for some folks. So the Livermore Municipal Code includes provisions for beekeeping that requires at least a half acre of land in order to have a beehive. And this essentially prohibits beekeeping on most suburban residential properties. And staff did find that most local governments do have regulations regarding beekeeping, and some of those are compiled into the table found in in your staff report on pages three ninety-seven, three ninety-eight. And our our research and surveys did reveal a variety of regulations across these jurisdictions. Most include common practices designed to control bee population size and behaviors, such as allowing one hive or colony and requiring fresh water nearby, flight path barriers and setbacks from property lines. So if if council directs staff to move forward with new regulations, then we're recommending considering a hybrid approach that would blend Pleasanton's noticing requirements and performance standards that you see in the right column there, along with Fremont's hive count based on lot size. And again, Pleasanton's also includes some noticing requirements there in addition to those performance standards. So in some staff survey work, we didn't really note a strong correlation between lot size and compatibility issues. Rather, most issues and complaints were the result of improper management practices. And this this particular hybrid approach would provide the greatest flexibility regarding lot size, and would also enable the city to rescind permits where noncompliance or nuisance issues arise. And so staff is recommending, again, if the council does direct us to move forward, that would be a hybrid approach to blend Pleasanton and Fremont's standards for beekeeping. We would continue to work with our Police Department's Animal Control Services staff before returning to the council with those amendments to the municipal code. That concludes my presentation. We're happy to answer questions.
Okay, bring it back. Any questions for staff at this point?
Yeah, is it, Mr. Stewart, is it clear the definition of what a hive is?
That would be one of the standards we would look at. They do how upper hives are different sizes. Typically, you have one bee colony per hive. Colony size can range from twenty thousand up to sixty to eighty thousand bees, depending on the size of the hive. So that would be one component we would look at when we return to you.
Oh, I see. So we don't know yet what that might be. Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to open up the public comment period for six point oh seven on beekeeping. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
No comments have been received.
Okay, are there on YouTube or Zoom? All right, with that, thank you. I'm going to close the public comment period, bringing it back to the council. Okay, so a couple of concerns that I have. There are bees are responsible for about two hundred thousand emergency room visits a year, about sixty thousand deaths per year because of anaphylaxis, people that are allergic to to bees. Now, I have no idea what percentage of those are somebody out walking it through in an open area and getting stung versus what may happen living next door to a hive of fifty thousand bees. Mr. Stewart, do we have any sense of what sort of complaints are received from residential beehives?
The actual complaint. The actual complaint or caseload is fairly small. We do have a few permitted hives in town. Most of those are on the larger lots. And again, we do only get occasional complaints primarily when the bees swarm, which is again, the result of improper management.
Okay, but we don't get typically complaints of, yeah, my neighbor's got bees that are overwhelming my yard and I'm getting stung or those sorts of things?
We have, we have had complaints like that in the past and our animal control will work with property owners to make sure they're managing those consistent with their animal fancier permits that they're required. But again, the overall number of complaints is very few from, you know, one if if that per year.
Okay, because my main concern is anaphylaxis in in children. But if you're saying that with good management practices and I was fascinated to read in the staff report that you can direct bees to find a certain direction. Wasn't aware that you could manage beehives to that to that extent. So and then other management techniques of the six foot fancy, I got all that. So it seems a reasonable compromise. Obviously, there are people that have great interest. I had a neighbor of mine that they kept bees and he actually would move them around to different orchards and the like to as pollinators. So with that, is there any discussion from the council? Any comments?
No, I Bob Coomer here, Mayor. I too is a little concerned about that because we have some anaphylaxis issues here at home. So I want to make sure that we're not going to reduce the size of the lot necessary for those two hives. That's that was my main concern going in and it looks like we're going to be okay with that.
What do you mean? Because we are reducing it from half an acre to 7,100 square feet.
Yeah, that's a little, that's a little dense for me, quite honestly. That's I had, I missed that portion while my dog was barking while I was muted. So yeah, I think that makes things a little tight. And Mr. Stewart, can you clarify that for me now that I have a quiet background? So is that one or two hives per 7,100 square feet?
We haven't tied it to a lot size just yet, but it would be up to two hives. And with, for example, the well, actually, so the Fremont lot size provisions, which we are taking a look at and recommending, would allow one hive on a 6,000 square foot lot and then two hives on up to an on an 8,000 square foot lot and perhaps more the larger you get with a minimum lot size of 6,000. And so one important aspect of this too is that if, you know, if there are reoccurring complaints and just issues with the management, that that permit can be revoked or rescinded and resulting in no hives on the property.
Okay, so we have a, we have a something built into this potential ordinance that would would have a resolution type of a factor to it.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Monroe.
First of all, this, I, given the concern about bees and pollination and just the general education around this is just, I reflected a little bit about how my opinion of bees has changed, you know, so the general culture around bees has changed over the course of my life from being a small child and terrified of bees, as were most of the people around me, to now where children are happy to see bees because they do good things for the flowers. It's it's a remarkable shift, cultural shift that we've we've gone through. I'm interested in a couple of things that I wasn't aware of and one was just how much you can train bees to not interact with people. And anyway, it sounds like the space matters, but it doesn't matter as much as you think it would. Is that correct? That was one of my takeaways.
That is, sure, I think that is correct. They can, they can sort of habitate in different configurations. As long as you do have some separation from the property lines and then those flyaway barriers is our understanding.
Yeah, those flyaway barriers. Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead. Yeah, well, it's just the flyaway barriers.
Yeah, so we I'm sorry. So we would return with, you know, a sort of a deeper analysis on setbacks and maybe get into a little more of the finer aspects of of, I don't know if you call it bee training, but apiary keeping and and how best to manage those as you change your property size.
I had one other question, which was in talking to Pleasanton in Fremont, have they had negative experiences at all? Or have you, you know, what have been their positive and negative experiences?
They're very similar to ours. They're just complaints are few and far between. And that that was the result there. It's interesting to note that, at least in the city of San Francisco, they don't, they don't have really any regulations. You can just have hives there. So it's a bit interesting all over the board. It's been an interesting topic to to look.
Thank you.
Okay. Council, Vice Mayor Werner.
And just want to be sure I heard that there's no data at the moment that correlates issues with lot size that you know of? And your reference.
Not, not. Yeah, not that we're aware of. We'll certainly look at that and try and do a little bit more homework when we come back to you. But it has more to do, again, with the hive management and controlling the swarms.
Okay, yeah, we've all heard the fact that bees are in crisis right now. And anything we do to help the bees to survive, I think is great. We also have to be concerned about public safety. So it comes down to hive management and we've got protocols in place to ensure that that happens, then I can certainly support this. With that, I'd entertain a motion.
Recommendation.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Carling. Listen, there might be a second by Councilmember Monroe. Any discussion on the the motion? All in favor? Roll call, please. Councilmember Carling?
Did we get public comment? I don't remember.
Yeah, we did, but there wasn't any.
Oh, there wasn't. Okay.
Okay, so with that, roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. Thank you. So this is going to be coming back. Very good. Thank you.
That's correct.
Let's see, this is next, hang on a second, 6.08, I believe. And that is, where's my bookmark? There we go. Okay, 6.08. This is designation of the voting delegate and alternate alternates to the 2020 League of California Cities Annual Business Meeting. So our current delegate is Councilmember Bob Carling and our alternate is Councilmember Monroe. Councilmember Carling, would you be willing to act as our delegate?
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And Councilmember Monroe, in the unlikely event that Councilmember Carling would not be able to to be there, would you be able to fill in?
Yep.
Okay, well, great. Well, thank you very much. That was easy. That 6.08 is closed. There, consider yourselves, well, Councilmember Warner?
Yeah, I noted in there that at the moment, they're not planning anything other than in person. And that struck me as concerning.
Yeah, well.
It's the other way around.
It's the other way around.
Oh, is it?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they've got quite an elaborate system on getting your your card to vote and how the whole process works. It's pretty elaborate, but
Good.
All right, very good. Okay, so we're 6.08. Appointments have been made. Finally, we go to that is initiated and council reports. So Councilmember Coomer.
Well, mine is really easy. I've had no scheduled meetings or anything for the last since our last meeting. So I've got really nothing to report on it. Nothing to initiate, although I sure drive around town and think these things out during the day, but nothing I could specify. Let's put it that way.
All right, very good. Thank you. Councilmember Monroe.
So I had one, one meeting that I attended. It was the EBCE meeting, really long meeting, covered finances, it covered new energy generation, but the thing that was really encouraging and took a long time was the report on local development. So I wanted to give a couple of those highlights. First of all, EBCE, this is your community energy choice energy aggregator. It's developing criteria for local successful number of local programs of development. They are they're looking at ways that they can bring environmental benefits of reducing the greenhouse gas and pollutant reductions, jobs created, and then working with impacted and disadvantaged communities. And so what what they're sort of the categories they're working with are increasing household efficiency at every income level and for every kind of building. There were five or six different ways in which they were doing this. I thought about listing them all and decided that probably appreciate ending the meeting sooner rather than later. Another one was increasing building electrification, increasing cities use of electric vehicles and encouraging more charging stations, developing electric car share programs for residents of multi unit buildings, innovation grants. One of the very, a couple of very specific ones that appealed to me, one is in use of induction cooktops. There's electrification as opposed to gas cooktops, much more efficient, much better for the environment in every possible way. And boy, keeps your kitchen a lot cooler. Another was heat pump, water heaters. Again, much, much better than the gas heaters. So these are ways in which they're actively reaching out to make a difference in electrifying the community. And then finally, on June, July 30th, it will have a launch of its residential solar and storage resilience program coming. So look for that coming soon. And then I don't have any matters to initiate, but I did want to share something personal, which is that tonight or today, all day, is my 40th wedding anniversary. So
Also talk.
Thank you. So yeah, it's been a heck of a 40 years. So I wanted to just give a shout out to my husband, Dave. And we celebrated over the weekend so that I could be here tonight, also because, you know, the weekend's a better time to celebrate. I just, I just wanted to express my gratitude publicly. He doesn't know I'm doing this, but oh, well, for the past 40 years of married life with a partner who's smart, thoughtful, funny and kind, we've been really fortunate. We've got two wonderful daughters, each who who has a spouse we adore. They have five children between them. Each grandchild is delightfully unique. Each of us has found work that engages us separately and we have interests we share. We have really been blessed and I am just deeply grateful. So thank you for letting me say that.
Well, thank you for sharing it again. Also talk to you, to your full family.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Carling, follow that one up.
Yes, well, congratulations, Trish, on 40 years. One of the things we were remiss in mentioning the last time we got together at city council was that three of us helped initiate the new farmer's markets earlier this. And so I'd like to give a shout out to the new management outfit that's running the farmer's market and they seem to be off to a very, very good start and I hope people take advantage of farmer's markets on Sunday and on Thursday. July 22nd, I had a stop waste meeting and then on the 23rd was the opportunity to hear the mayor in the in his final state of the city address. And so congratulations for that, John, and it was very well done. And I suppose you haven't finished your bottle of wine just yet.
Thank you.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Werner.
Yeah, I'm going to go back to that previous thing. I'm reading what's here on attachment one on that thing and it says these procedures assume that the conference will be held in person. That's what I, that's what it says. They haven't put out the procedures for not in person. So I was just wondering when they're going to do that. That's all.
Actually, they did. They did. I received an email to that effect.
Okay, didn't see that. So the, and I'll second what Councilmember Carling said about the state of the city speech by the mayor that was great. And the, and it was fun to go to the farmer's market and do the opening, cutting the grapevine, plastic grapevine with the pruning shears. But the one thing I did want to mention that's really significant, attended a special meeting of the Altamont Open Space Committee. And you may recall that what that does is try to figure out of the money we get to mitigate the impact of the expansion of the landfill, that we've got money in that committee that we can allocate to buying open space. And we are in the process of being more proactive in figuring out where to target the money. But you may have heard about the N3 cattle ranch that's become the 50,000 acres. And so
A Tesla.
Pardon?
By the town of Tesla. It's kind of southwest of there.
Well, it's
Corral Hollow.
Yeah, well, I don't know if it's next to it so much, but it's in the vicinity. But it's further down Mines Road. Like, that's where it is. But 50,000 acres. So this is, you know, people are describing this as once in a lifetime opportunity. The owners put out a number for what they want to sell it at. And it was a fairly high number, but they are interested in selling it for conservation purposes. So a number of conservation groups governments are trying to put together the money to buy it. And so the Altamont Open Space Committee, because it has some cash at hand, was approached to see if it could be part of the deal. And so we're looking at it and we approved out of our current 16 million that we have, and we're growing that at about one point something per year to spend up to 5 million to contribute towards the purchase. The request that originally came in was seven to 12. But we pared that back to five at the moment. That's still a big chunk of money. And the idea is that the Open Space Committee has other priorities within closer in the valley. So we've agreed at that meeting to approve, you know, subject to city council approval, 5 million, up to 5 million at the moment for that purchase. The second thing we did was approve 200,000 or recommend approval of for upfront at risk fees to explore that negotiation. We also, as part of the money, we did be able to contribute it. We did, as you say, Mayor, we linked it to being able to also acquire and the other conservation groups help us acquire Tesla as well as Cedar Mountain. And the thought is that those three parcels are very important and are more valuable because of the wildlife corridors. So we're linking the contribution from the Open Space Committee to the being able to get support for buying all of some pieces of all those properties. And then finally, we authorized Sean Wilson, who's the chair of the committee, to negotiate on behalf of the committee and to join the team, but subject to a clear direction in a closed session from the committee as to the negotiating parameters. So this is a So this is a, an exciting opportunity. Hopefully, the open space committee can contribute a significant amount that makes the deal go through. But we're not at the moment contributing so much of our assets that we deplete them to the point where we can't execute on any of our other priorities. So it's, this will be coming back to the council shortly.
Very good. There, I also read recently there was legislation going through Congress that was going to provide some significant funds for acquisition of parklands. Do you know if we would be able to qualify for any of that?
Oh, I'm, I'm pretty sure everybody's going for every amount of money they can. You know, then you've got the question is, you know, what's, what's our favorability rating at the national level for these kinds of things?
That's true. There's actually a bipartisan effort. So I was quite surprised.
Yeah, well, it's a, you know, fifty thousand acres is incredible.
It's a big chunk of land.
You know, and the other thing I'll mention that what has to be figured out, and it's not trivial, but it's of secondary importance in my mind to being able to first get the acreage. It's, we'll also, we'll have to figure out how to manage it because it's not going to be cheap to do that well either.
Right. That's very good. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so as far as reporting out on Thursday, the twenty third, the Alameda County Transportation Commission, really kind of interesting, there was a, we voted on two resolutions of necessity to expand Highway four, Highway eighty four, I'm sorry. And one of the parcels was the, one of the original Burnell land grants. And it involved an heir that had died a hundred years ago. But it was the last heir on the grant. So it was kind of a tricky parcel, but it was to improve and to widen Highway eighty four, making that connection to, to six eighty. As was mentioned, the state of the city address, my final one. And it was only two hundred twenty six slides. So not quite as onerous as one might think, but it was, it was a lot of fun and I really had a great time with that. Also today, I was at a remarkable event and something that I think really is what Livermore is about. I was at the Sutton Girls Farmer's Market and that's over on Geraldine. And they, they have a little farmer's market and also a little library, a free library. And the farmer's market, it's, they don't charge. They have produce from their own backyard and canned foods as well. And they, they offer to anybody that needs food can come and take it. And for anybody that, that can leave food behind, a little, if they have any extra, to please do so. So today, there was a woman by the name of Veronica Johnson who wanted to celebrate the life of her, her son Dylan. Dylan passed away from a heart defect twenty years ago. And she's been very active in the Make-A-Wish organization and wanted to celebrate in this, these, these difficult times to provide some joy to the community. So she gave away free ice cream today at the Sutton Girls Farmer's Market. Had a Mr. Softy truck come up and as many people in the neighborhood, as many people could drive in, they, they did and got free ice cream in, in memory of Dylan Johnson. So it was a, quite a, quite a remarkable event of how our community continues to, to give. And that sense of generosity, which I've said, is in the DNA of our community. So best wishes to the Sutton Girls and the Farmer's Market and to Veronica and Dylan. With that, I would like to adjourn, recognize we've lost another friend. We keep losing some remarkable folks, but he was a historian. Every year he would come back to Livermore and walk in the Relay for Life, the fundraiser for cancer research. He would also volunteer to operate the printing press at the Alameda County Fair. Barry Schrader passed away and he also wrote the book, With the Last Person to Lead Livermore, Please Turn Out the Lightbulb. So with that, I would like to adjourn this meeting in memory of Barry Schrader. And we will meet again on August tenth. So thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.